Okay, because I'm gonna punt to her pretty soon.
Hi, good morning and welcome to the April 29th, 2020 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Sedgwick County Public Information Officer. You'll notice again that we are social distancing in this room. We are also limiting commissioners and staff to meet the current orders. We're streaming this morning's meeting on KPTS Channel 8 and also on Sedgwick County's social media channels on Facebook and YouTube. This morning, we'd like to bring in our Election Commissioner Tabitha Layman to give us an update on the elections.
Morning, Tabitha.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just wanted to give you a quick update this morning on how we're doing with our contingency planning for the upcoming election cycle. And I know I sent you some of this information, but we wanted to make sure we get this information out to the public as well, so this was a good way to do that. I wanted to preface this with a couple of things. I have received a lot of questions from people about whether or not we can switch the upcoming elections to all by mail. And the answer is, right now, Kansas law restricts any election that has a candidate on the ballot from being contacted solely by mail, so the answer to that is no. That would take legislative action or someone way above my head with much greater authority than I have. So, we will be doing all of our contingency planning within the confines of what Kansas law currently is. We had three specific goals in mind as we worked on our contingency planning. We wanted to provide protection for the voters and election workers, obviously, from the spread of COVID, but also, we wanted to protect our voters from being disenfranchised. But we need to comply with the law. Our next one was to protect the integrity of the election and make sure we produce accurate election results that everyone can trust. And then, our third goal was to make sure that we accomplished those first two while still being fiscally responsible. We know that 75% of our election workers are in the high-risk category based on their age alone. And we have contacted approximately 2,000 current and past election workers, and so far, just shy of 230 people have agreed to work, which is about 30% of who we need for the upcoming August election. We have had multiple polling places canceling, and we are working to replace those, but it's kind of difficult because most people are closed, so we can't get ahold of people at these locations right now. And we know that it is likely we will have more closed if this continues to go on as it has been. We believe it's likely that we will still be needing to observe some kind of social distancing as we come into the election cycle, so we are taking that in consideration as well. We have been working with other election offices, working very closely with Johnson County, because combined, we make up 40% of the registered voters in the state, and we think it's very important that we come at this from a united front and treat our voters the same way. We have also worked with the Secretary of State's office and gotten some guidance from them. So, with all that said, I just wanted to give you our contingency plan. So, first of all, our commitment is that we are gonna keep as many polling places open as we possibly can and replace the ones that we can. That is for multiple reasons. One is because we know if we need to do social distancing within the polling place, we have to have as many polling places as possible to get voters through there with social distancing. And the other is because we don't want to have voters having to drive further away from where they live to vote. We are planning to increase our early voting options, and we are obviously going to increase our poll worker recruitment efforts because we need to find a different pool of board workers. We normally send out an advance-by-mail flyer in September to encourage people to vote by mail and give them early voting options, and we are redesigning that flyer, and we're planning to send that in May this year instead of in September. That mailer will include an application to vote by mail for both the primary and the general elections, and we will give them a link to go to find out what early voting options are, because we are very concerned that that's gonna continue to change as this progresses, and we don't want to put something in writing and have it be incorrect. By encouraging people to vote by mail, we're hopeful that we'll reduce the number of people at the polling places so that if we have fewer election workers, we don't create long lines. That will also allow us to, it will be easy for us to do social distancing. And then, we are working on providing personal protective equipment for our election workers, and then, best practices for disinfecting the voting machines and the polling places. And then, of course, we are still working with facilities to explore options for social distancing within our office space for the temporary staff we bring in and for early voting as well. So, I just wanted to give you that update and see if anyone has any questions.
Well, thanks, Tabitha. Challenging times indeed, so thanks for being proactive and coming up with plans, and communication will be huge to the public.
Yes.
So...
And I would mention with our flyer, we are seeking to save money, so we are, we've normally done it red, white, and blue, and this time, we're just gonna, we're gonna cut down on those colors because we are looking for a way to do this as quickly as we can and as efficiently as possible. So, when we have the final design, we will definitely be putting that on social media so people know what to look for, but it will have some bright colors on it. It just won't be as colorful as it has been in the past.
Colors are good.
Yes.
Any questions?
Do you feel like the communication to encourage folks to vote by mail, do you have enough in your funds to cover that? And how many times are you going to be sending it out?
We will send, right now, the plan is to send it out as quickly as we can, hopefully in May, and then, we will have to assess again after that to see, by having the primary and the general application, we're hopeful that we will get enough people for both elections respond, but we have never done it this way before, so we don't know what to expect. We don't know if people will respond for the primary and not the general, and then we need to readdress for the general. We do know that the State Secretary of State's office has received just shy of $5 million in federal funds to help respond to COVID with the election process coming up. We don't know yet how, what we will get to spend, what will come to us. I know anything that we previously had budgeted, we will obviously get reimbursed for, just like anything else, and this was previously budgeted, so we may be able to tap into some of those funds to do another flyer before the general if we need to. But this is sending something out to every active registered voter, so they should get that in their hands from us, so we are hopeful that will be helpful. Obviously, we are working with communications as well to get the, Kate has already reached out to me and been proactive on that to get the word out to people as well through social media and the media.
Yeah, that's important. I think the more we can talk about it as frequently as possible, I think, the better.
Yeah, and I can, I can make it a thing where I give regular updates to just let you know how many people have responded. Of course, for us, we just don't know. We're gonna be looking very closely at the data of who responds with this. We don't know if we'll end up with, will people who normally vote in the primary ask for a ballot by mail, or will we be dealing with new voters who don't normally vote in a primary? These are all unknowns because we've never done this. So, we'll be analyzing that data so that we can see if we think we're actually pulling people off of Election Day or not, but we have to do something because we don't have enough election workers and we don't have enough polling places, so...
So, if somebody wanted to apply for this job, you would just go to Cedric? Can you talk about that, because there's a lot of high schoolers that are...
Yes, yes, and 16 and 17-year-olds can apply as long as they are residents of Sedgwick County and United States citizens, and you can do that by going to our website. We have a link. I think it's just on the top. There's like a banner, "Election Workers Needed," or something like that, right at the top, very obvious, and you click on that link and go through the application process, and then we will contact you and go through what the job entails and all of that, and make sure you're qualified to work.
And what is the starting wage for that?
It's $7.50 an hour.
Oof, okay.
Yeah. And then, the supervising judges make $10 an hour, but we don't normally take somebody off the street who's never worked before and put them in charge of a polling place, so, pretty much, it'll be $7.50 an hour.
Okay, so can we communicate that? I think that that's important, especially on social media for all those kids out there that are needing something to do. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay. All right, thank you, Tabitha. Good luck with everything.
All right, and to wrap up on the agenda today, we have an update from Health Director Adrian Byrne on COVID-19. You'll have a discussion about the stay-at-home and gathering orders, and then, there will be a discussion on the CARES Act, and there's four items for our procurement for you to review and consider as well. So, I will let you begin the meeting, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Kate, and welcome back. Good to see you again. Welcome, everybody, to the Wednesday, April 29th, Sedgwick County Commission Meeting. And Commissioners, welcome back as well. So, the order of business, Madam Clerk, first order.
In vacation, to be led by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
President.
Commissioner Dennis.
President.
Commissioner Howell.
President.
Commissioner Cruz.
President.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present.
Next item.
Public agenda.
Before we go to public agenda, Mike Papoun, please, County Counselor, please, you had a couple of housekeeping things.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In accordance with the Attorney General's procedures with regard to how we're handling our meetings now, which is obviously not anywhere close to how we'd normally be doing it, we talk about how we receive public comment and how we're gonna do public comment. All of you have received a thick pile of people, of citizens, that have given you public comment, and that's the only public comment I believe we are receiving in this meeting, and we are having an executive session today. The executive session will be in this room. We will be inviting the people to leave that aren't part of the executive session or return to the same room at the end of the executive session.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. On the, on the public agenda item, we've all received copies this morning of a number of comments. I think I added them up. There's like 72 comments, something like that. I proved them pretty much, and most all of them are about opening or not opening the county and the state for more business. I didn't see one, unless any of you saw one that needs to be read or pointed out, but there's, there's quite a bit in there.
I'm going through them. I'm trying, so I don't know yet.
Okay.
I think it's important to note, I'm sorry to interrupt you, do you want to read that one that you saw? I think that's important. I haven't found it yet.
I have a concern about one email that we received. And the question was, is it safe to go to your doctor appointments? I have breathing issues and diabetes. The breathing issues, I have COPD and asthma and have allergies, so I was wondering if it's safe for me to go to my doctor's appointment. We need to make sure that people understand that they need to go to their doctors. The Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners are not medical professionals. Please, if you have health issues, go to your doctor. Don't email the Board of County Commissioners.
Or for sure, call your doctor and ask them.
Absolutely.
If you need to come in.
Yeah, we've had, we've had a number of doctors, including hospitals, indicate that they're nervous that people are not going to the doctor, not calling, not all the things we talked about, so the hospitals are, and I, Tom, you got anything to add to that?
No, I just wanted to make sure, Chairman, that you mentioned about the recess at 10:00 this morning for the training session, so when this conversation is done, you might just mention that.
Okay. So, but we want to ask the public, please, don't, you should not be afraid to go to the hospital, and you should not be afraid to call your doctor, and I believe that they've even indicated that selective surgeries and other things are gonna be opening up for business real quick, if not this weekend, so...
I would just encourage people, I mean, they, you know, our hospital system has a, a very good procedure now about how treat, you know, treating people who have symptoms when you come in. So, if you're afraid of catching the virus because of other people who might have it there, they are doing a very good job of quarantining folks who do have symptoms, so don't worry about that, and go get the medical care that you need as soon as possible.
Okay. Any other comments? Commissioner Howell, is there work?
Yeah, just a comment, I've gone through these pretty quickly, I haven't had time to read them carefully, but just kind of categorizing these, that if they have a, you know, they advocate to open or keep the orders in place, it's about 50/50. I'm keeping track here, so...
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Good. Our statistician, Commissioner Howell, is reporting in. So, thank you. That's right, okay.
Move to receive and file.
Second.
It's been a motion to, to receive and file on our public comments. Any other comment? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, before we go to new business, Tom, do you want to, can you share with us?
I just wanted to remind the commission and the public that at 10:00 AM this morning, there's an opportunity that several of the commissioners are, if not all of them, are going to tune into a webcast regarding Board of Health training. It's a state training, so we will have to recess, Chairman, at a little bit before 10:00 AM. I think that training is scheduled to last for approximately an hour, and we will be convening the meeting after that time. Just wanted to remind you of that scheduling issue.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So, Madam Clerk, next item.
New business. Item A, Sedgwick County Health Department update on COVID-19.
Okay. Ms. Adrian Byrne, welcome to the Commission Meeting.
Good morning, Commissioners and Board of Health. Adrian Byrne, Health Director. So, as reported by John Hopkins, Kansas has 3,652 cases of COVID-19, and Sedgwick County, we have 354 cases. In Sedgwick County, a total of 174 people have recovered from COVID-19, and six people have died. This week, we have increased, well, last week, we increased our testing capabilities and have already sampled approximately 174 people, and today, we have 115 scheduled. Testing is done at no cost. I hear there was some confusion because of not always saying no cost, but the testing at, the sampling, to be able to send to a lab to test at the Health Department is no cost to anyone. If someone has insurance, we do take that for the lab so that they can then bill the insurance, but there is no out-of-pocket at any time for anybody that needs tested. So, we encourage individuals with COVID-19 symptoms, and there's a, there's a pretty wide range of those at this point, but any upper or lower respiratory struggles, difficulty breathing, fever, cough, to call 211. And 211 will ask questions to find out which of those symptoms that they have, and then, we'll connect them with our nurse triage line at the Health Department, and then, we will get anyone scheduled that currently has any of those symptoms for our drive-through, and again, that is at no cost. KHTU reports that over 3,800 Sedgwick County residents have been tested for COVID-19. We are looking at expanding testing to offer some ability at our East 9th location, and really, our thoughts on that is to offer that location for anyone in the area that may have transportation struggles and aren't quite able to get to the West Central location. So, next week, we will be ironing out those plans, and we'll work with our Communications Department to get that information out. That will likely be on a walk-in basis, but it will be by appointment, and again, that will be much limited number compared to what we do at West Central, where we do a drive-through and shoot for over 100. We really, we can do more, but, so, right now, you know, in the past, the supplies were the struggle, and, you know, currently, it's, it's people that want to come in to be sampled, and I hear there's, you know, still anxiety about getting out and whether it's, you know, going to the doctor, the hospital, or coming in for testing, but really encourage anybody that, that is symptomatic to call 211. We are starting to, and are able to, because of having probably close to 2,000, the ability to test 1,500 to 2,000 people, and those supplies keep on coming in daily, but we are able to test asymptomatic first responders, and so, if a first responder wants to be tested, does not have any symptoms, we're gonna test first responders. The same goes for nursing home staff that are asymptomatic but would like to be tested because the staff are the ones that are coming and going, where the residents are there, and so, they are more at risk. Also, so, healthcare workers and Department of Correction employees, we also wanted to add to that list since they are coming and going, so anyone in that group does not have to have any symptoms to be tested. Just call 211. We've worked with them to let them know that if you're in any of those categories, that we will test you regardless of having any symptoms. And being tested doesn't mean, if someone is negative, it doesn't mean you're in the clear because you could develop symptoms five days, 14 days later, and we're also testing all contacts of any positive case. The contacts still need to be quarantined for 14 days, so even if someone has a negative response, that we've had some confusion from people thinking that they didn't have to be quarantined, that they had a negative test result, but that is not true, so need to quarantine for 14 days because people have reported symptoms on day 13 or 14 after being quarantined. So, COVID-19 is still a moving target, and new information comes through every day, sometimes two, three times a day. We'll have a plan to do something, and then, something's modified, so as many of, as we all know, it's just a moving target, and it's really hard to make plans, and I know that that is really frustrating for everybody. So, that is my report for today. We hope to answer any questions.
Okay. So, Adrian, maybe what's, what's new, what's recent news and improvements is our testing ability to, up to 100 and even more, besides the privates that are testing?
And we continue to get supplies in, and when we, you know, we have the ability to test over 300, 400 people a day at our West Central location, so it's just a matter of having enough people, not even enough supplies, because we are finally got to the place where those swabs are coming in on a regular basis, and we're very pleased with that, but now, need people to call into 211. And even if your, your doctor in the past told you that you were presumptive positive because of not meeting criteria to test, if you're still feeling ill on any level, please call 211 so we can get you tested, and even if you're feeling better, the important piece about why you should be tested is that if you're positive, then we can do a contact investigation on all the people that you came in contact with that we need to get out of circulation to ensure that they're, that they don't have COVID-19.
Okay. Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you. Just... We have seen, I would say, may, an increase in some of the positive cases, but it's been explained that we were testing more people, and that would be expected, so I was wondering if we have data, it'd be presented in a chart format, that we talk about positive test results divided by the number of tests conducted. To me, that would tell us, you know, whether or not things have changed. I would think that if people have symptoms, that, that population would have more positive tests, and as you loosen the symptom requirements, as we have, no longer temperatures required, I understand, that we're testing more people, maybe with, with less symptoms perhaps. I would expect that that ratio would probably actually go down. Can you comment on that, or is that data available somewhere to see the positives divided by the number of tests conducted?
I don't believe we've divided it by the number of tests conducted. I mean, we do look at the, the rate per 100,000 people. We have added a couple of other charts to the county website, if you'd like to look at that, and shows more of a plateau, particularly when you take out the clusters that have occurred and look at the number of cases that are coming in on a daily basis, but again, we're, you know, just started to ramp up that testing, and we'll continue.
I don't know if we have the data for number of tests, provide, you know, number of tests conducted and the number of positives, but if that data's available, I would love to get my hands on that data, because I think that would be a really very important chart to look at, and I'm trying to find the data. I'm having trouble getting the data. Along that same line, I have to ask, you know, what's going on inside the hospitals? Number one reason for these orders was to manage what's, what's happening inside the hospitals, trying to make sure that they have enough resources available. Can you please talk about the PPE in the hospitals, the staff, and the number of beds available, and that type of thing?
And the, the hospitals are a very important piece of this, but it wasn't the only reason to do the stay-at-home orders and what has occurred. It was to not, not only not to overwhelm the hospitals, but to reduce the number of people becoming ill all at the same time. I mean, there's only so many people that are actually going into the hospital that have critical needs, but the, the hospitals are the owners of the information when it comes to hospital beds and how many ventilators people are using. What, what we know is how many people are in the hospital when they were tested and became positive, and then, how many people go to the hospital after testing. So, that information that we have, the hospitals are the shares of that, the owners and shares of that information. The PPE, I imagine John Jarvis could address that, but it's something that Rusty would also know as far as the amount of PPE that is going out into the community. There, there's still a need, but a lot of the preliminary issues are being addressed as far as them having PPE, it's just having a stockpile enough to know that it's always there.
I understand they have, they're the ones that own the data, and they may not want to share that, but I think it's important for us to understand their capabilities. And statewide, I just, talking to some state legislators, if I understand correctly, and I don't know how to, how to describe this, but they said that there's 5,000 beds. I don't know if that's, again, that's statewide, but 5,000 beds, I assume that's all hospital beds? I don't know, you know, what the description of that is exactly, but they said there's 5,000 beds, and as of, as of a day, a day or so ago, we've had a total of about 500 hospitalizations statewide, and in Sedgwick County, 61 hospitalizations since the beginning of this COVID-19 pandemic. And of those 61, it'd be nice to know exactly how many are still in the hospital and what their capabilities are. We were told initially, there would be up to 52,000 hospitalizations in Sedgwick County. That was the number we were told in this room on March 20.
That was with no, that was with no social distancing. That was worst-case scenario, just a reiteration of that.
I understand. So, but 61's a very small number compared to 52,000, and so, with that in mind, you know, if all of this, all of our controls, all of our orders are based on trying to make sure that we don't overwhelm the hospitals, which is what was quoted here, then, I, I think it's relevant for us to know what their capabilities are, what's currently being utilized and what's currently available. I've been asking for that data, and I continue to ask for that data, and I, I can't seem to get the data, and for whatever reason, they don't want to share that data. I think we have to know that for us to make intelligent, smart decisions on what we do going forward, so I'll continue to ask for that. My final question would be this. I don't know if it's fair to do this or not, but we keep reporting a number of cases, and I know that's the popular, that's the popular thing. We hear it all on the news, we hear it on the radio, we talk about it here today, the number of cases, but really, what we ought to be tracking is the number of active cases. I don't know if it's fair to just simply subtract out the recovered numbers, but I'm not sure that's the, the right math there. Take the number of cases and subtract out the number of recovered or the number that passed away? In our case, you said it was, we had, you had 174 recovered and six that died, so that's 180 out of 354, if that's fair. So, if I subtract that out, is that the number of active cases in Sedgwick County?
That we know of.
That we know of, right. That we've tested, that at one point had tested positive.
Yes.
I, I think we ought to be tracking active cases, and I, I don't know, out of those active cases, we'd have two, two definitions as to what is considered recovered. One is based on time, and one's based on symptoms. Do we know, do we know the breakdown of that? How many of them simply, the seven days is expired, and that's...
No, because it, it just needs to be a minimum of seven days. So, it's whichever's longer, that whether it's seven days from onset of their symptoms or three days fever and symptom-free without the use of over-the-counter meds, whichever's longer. So, they, so we know that people need to be isolated for at least seven days. Some people are ill longer, and so, it may be 10, maybe 12 longer days.
Okay. It would be nice to break that down somehow, to know how that recovered number is of two different categories. If there's a way to break that down, I don't know if we have that data, but it'd be, it'd be nice to know that as well. Again, I think that data is the most important thing here. We don't, we don't have, seem to have access to the right data to make the best decisions here, so I continue to ask for the details of what's going on inside the hospitals. I think that's, that's a key piece of our data that we have to have, and I hear stories, I'm sure we've all heard stories of things that are going on out there that make you shake your head, and I wonder, wonder why that, you know, why things are happening the way they are. I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding exactly what we're doing here and exactly the thought process behind these orders necessarily, so I'm asking for information. I hope I can get that soon. Thank you, thank you for the chance to comment.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman. So, I, I have, I've received some, some information about... So I, I have, I've received some, some information about folks who've called 211 and they have, you know, all the symptoms and have been turned away. And I wonder, are we error, are we erring on the side of caution when someone calls? Or could you just speak to, you know, the whole process of how somebody calls in and what questions they're asked? And can you just speak to that?
When, when I've asked why someone might have not gotten an appointment, it was that they either were outside of Sedgwick County or they weren't having symptoms the day they called, that they might say, well, I felt really bad yesterday, what are you experiencing? Well, today I, I feel okay. So for the general population, we're not doing asymptomatic at this time. It's the healthcare workers, correction workers, nursing home workers.
Do you expect us to, to do that in the future?
If we had enough testing, I would love to do that.
Yeah, okay. I just, I wanted to address it here today because there were, you know, some comments flying around and I just wanted to make sure that, you know, people understand and they understand the process and that, I think, the majority of folks who call in, do we have the number of people who have called? I mean, can we get that data from 211?
Yes, yes. We, we have that and can, can give that to you.
Okay, that'd be great. I appreciate it. Thank you so much for everything you're doing. This is such a stressful time. There are, information is coming from every single place and it's really hard to disseminate it all and make sure you understand what's good and what's bad. And so I, I really appreciate all you're doing, Adrian, and I really, really do. Thank you for serving this community in this capacity and I'm, I'm just really impressed with your, your service and your leadership and I'm, I'm happy to be working with you.
Well, thank you. I, I have a fabulous staff and the community has stepped up.
Okay, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. Good morning, Adrian. One of the questions that I've had some of my constituents ask me about would be regarding if they have a parent or a loved one that's in a nursing home, are we coming up with a plan that they can start to see those individuals? Because I guess it's really affecting their mental and emotional state, which affects their physical health. And have we looked at what other communities have done regarding allowing people to see their loved ones?
And unfortunately, nursing homes can be such a hotspot as far as high, high level of spread.
And I shouldn't just say nursing home, I should also say assisted living because I know there is a difference, so.
But yes, it, it is, it's, it's, it's an awful situation, it really is. What we're going to do is wait for Thursday when the governor announces what, what her plans are and, but that is, that's a high-risk situation, so I'm not sure how much that that's going to change and possibly may at least, but FaceTime and anything like that, and I know it's not the same to be able to, to touch somebody and to be in front of them. So all those things are, we're, we're aware, as you all are, of all of those things and how difficult they are and as soon as we can get back in a safe manner, that would definitely be something we wanted to do.
Well, could, could I ask that you or your staff actually start looking to see what nationally other nursing homes and assisted living facilities are doing so that we're not necessarily behind the curve on that? Because really it comes down to scenarios where people are talking about moving their mother or father out of the homes because they are so sad and despondent over it. I mean, I think we all are feeling that a little bit, but, but if we were locked away from our family, it would be much worse.
It's really, really hard. Yes, and we, and I have staff that, that are looking at what other states are doing and I'll ask them to pull that out specifically.
Okay, great. I'll let, I'll let Mr. Moyer know. Thank you.
Would be nice to know the, the level of clusters in, you know, nursing facilities. I mean, that, I mean, we just had one announced today. You know, I think that population of people, having worked in that, that field for a very, very long time, I actually used to work, I went into Chisholm Place. So I think it's important to understand that this is not forever, but that population of people are the most vulnerable. This, this does ask, remind me of a question though. How are we handling home health and hospice folks? I mean, you have nurses that bebop in and out of multiple facilities. Are they, are they being tested or how is that being handled?
We, we have let, let nursing home staff know and any medical person actually, because you're right, there's a lot of home health aides that are going in one-on-one even to someone's home, that they have the ability to be tested. And we had a call, we had the ability to have someone from CDC that was in Kansas and held a conference call with all of the nursing homes that were able to be part of it. And I, I hear there were a number of nursing homes that were able to be part of that, just somewhat hungry to hear what someone from the Center for Disease Control and Prevention would suggest. And she was the, the person from CDC, I'm blanking her name, was very impressed with what our nursing homes had been doing. You know, we had been providing them guidance and always do as far as infection control. A lot of our nursing homes have really strong plans already. They just need tweaked sometimes when there's an outbreak of norovirus, which is a stomach flu or, or something else. So we are, we are available to our nursing homes and continue to provide guidance and, and work with them.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Adrian. I don't see any other questions. Appreciate it. Next up.
Sorry, Tim's going to give an update on testing. And then I might mention also, there was a miscommunication on the webinar today, so I think the commission can continue with the meeting at 10:00. I apologize for that.
Right, okay. And I had a chance to review that too and so there, we will not be taking a recess at 10 o'clock.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tim Kaufman, Deputy County Manager. And before I start my remarks about sampling, and Adrian touched on some of it already, I wanted to mention to Commissioner Howell that I think if you look at the website today, we've got some data that shows, doesn't get exactly what you're looking at, but we've got a rolling, either a seven or 10-day average of the percent positive of the test results. And so that may help you get at one of the things that you're looking at. The other thing I'd like to point out is that our staff, our communications staff, our IT staff and the EPIs are all working together to try and push as much data as possible out there. And so they're adding new tabs to that dashboard all the time. So you may want to take a look at that and see if that helps get at the question that you were asking earlier about the percent of the positives that are coming about in the sampling that we're doing.
I'll take a look at that again. Thank you.
Sure. Since our meeting last week, the Health Department ran their drive-through local collection site five times. Those samples were being tested by either the state lab or the Quest Lab. We served 345 people over that five-day period, including 42 that braved the weather last Wednesday. I don't know if you recall, but after this meeting, the weather turned quite a bit and we had significant wind and rain, but the tent that we've got up right now for our drive-through sampling site kept folks able to continue to operate that thing throughout that storm. To increase sampling, we intend to also increase the locations. As Adrian mentioned, we're going to start doing some sampling at our East Ninth location and to get more people to go through the sampling process, I'd again like to encourage people to call 211 if they're not feeling well, talk about whether or not they're appropriate, appropriate for sampling that day and, and remind folks that that is offered at no cost to the individual. Our current inventory of swabs for sampling this morning is 3,043. So that's a significant jump from last week. And it includes 151 that we received from the state yesterday and a partial shipment of a commercial order that we placed almost four weeks ago. So we got about 40% of what we had, of a single order from last week that represented 2,000 swabs, which was nice to see them hit so that we can continue to ramp up the, the sampling that we do. We still have over 17,000 swabs on order and we continue to make requests of the state and to place orders with the commercial providers as well. And the last comment that I'd make is I'd like to remind the public that sampling and testing criteria have been relaxed significantly to those exhibiting two symptoms, including a fever, persistent dry cough, shortness of breath, chest tightness and muscle, and/or chills, muscle pain, headaches, sore throat, or a new loss of taste or smell. And if that occurs with anybody, I'd encourage them to call either 211 or their primary care physician to begin that screening process. I'd like to thank the Health Department and the Purchasing Department for the work that they're doing to pursue these supplies that we need so that we can continue to increase sampling. The sampling and testing is really critical to any decisions that we make going forward. So I'm proud of the work that the staff have done to increase the capacity and the ability and I want to make sure that we get the word out to the community and let them know that we do have supplies and we're ready to sample them and that it takes, all it takes is a phone call to 211 to get that process started. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Commissioner Chairman. A couple of things. Last week I drove by the testing facility over on Central and probably 20 people in full PPE standing outside, not a single car around, but we had like 20 people standing around. Do you need a staff of that many people in full PPE?
If things, the, the way we schedule things is we schedule and we use wave scheduling, which is pretty common with medical scheduling. And so we'll ask for somewhere between, we'll schedule on 15-minute increments and so we'll have 10 or 15 folks scheduled at each quarter hour. And if folks hit at that quarter hour, then we need that full complement of folks to get them through as quickly as possible. Again, we want to minimize the impact on the folks that we're sampling as well. And I think they're adjusting staffing levels based on the number of folks that they schedule. This still is not a drive-up, walk-up type test site. It is a scheduled test site and so they adjust their staffing schedule based on needs. Don't know what would have happened on that particular day, but I think they're pretty careful about how they, because PPE is still a precious commodity and so they make sure that they're not overstaffing if they don't need to.
Okay, well, and then later on, I was watching the news and they showed a picture of the testing and again, on the news that night when I watched it, there wasn't a single car there, but all those people were still there in, in full PPE and, and it is a precious commodity. I want to make sure that, that we're not just putting a whole lot of staff out there and, and suiting them completely up and, and we're not using it. The other thing that's been mentioned twice is opening up another facility over here on Ninth Street. Well, I've got a couple of questions about that. First of all, the central location is almost dead center in the center of the Sedgwick County, which is probably the optimum location. If we're going to start picking out people that, and saying that certain populations can't get over to that facility, then I guess I, I need to have a facility out in Cheney, Bentley, Colwich, Andale, Viola. Where, where do we stop? I, I don't understand opening another facility when we've got one already. We're already suiting people up there. It's in the very center of Sedgwick County. So if you're going to say that we need them closer to the people, well, I got about 10 places. I'll start giving you the list.
Well, we'll, we'd be glad to take a look at that, but one of the reasons that we, I, we prefer that that East Ninth location is because it is in a, an area where folks tend to have transportation issues more than anywhere else.
And you're saying that people can get in from Cheney to, to here easier? I don't buy your, your logic. I truly don't.
The other part of the logic is that we have staff at East Ninth that are TB-trained and so they're used to taking, taking samples and that site is really configured additionally to, to accept those samples. We'll continue to look. We've really been limited by sampling supplies up until now. If we get to the point where we have enough sampling supplies and enough staff that we can do mobile sites or we can move around the community, we'll certainly do that. But up until now, we've really been limited on the amount of swabs that we had available to test and, and we were also limited by the volume of tests that the KDHE lab could run as well. If we get to the point where we're ready to open up more broadly, we'll certainly consider a mobile site or moving the site around.
Okay, well, before we start opening up Ninth Street, you better figure out how we're going to serve the rest of the community. I'm not gonna, if I take some motion, I'll make a motion that we review this before that you start opening up more sites and don't pay attention to the rest of the, of the county.
Understood. Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Cruz.
Oh, I just, I just, I wonder, you know, have you had some calls from Cheney? Have you had some folks reach out to you that aren't able to get to sites?
I have people that live in those communities. I don't care whether I'm, they're communicating with me. I care about the people that are in those communities.
I'm not saying that you don't care about these people, but what I'm saying is when we have historical data showing that that's a heavy populated area, I just, I, I hear what you're saying. I guess I don't understand why we wouldn't allow our Health Department to do what they feel is best. Why wouldn't we allow them to do that?
Have they considered the rest of the county?
Have you brought it up before today? I mean, I've been talking about this for three weeks.
Are we getting into an argument back and forth? We don't do that in this commission.
Well, I just, I feel like you're being sort of...
We don't argue back and forth from the bench.
All right, let's, let's move on. Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you for telling me what I can do. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Howell.
Assume that when they call 211, there probably is some discussion about, do you have transportation to get to the testing site? They probably explain where it is. And if someone has trouble getting over there because of lack of transportation, I'd assume that they would, that would be the discussion. They would be able to provide, if you will, a transportation option for them in some way. If that's, if that's the case, then I would agree with Commissioner Dennis, we don't need additional testing sites unless there's not enough capacity at that one to handle the testing, testing numbers. And obviously with, with what was already described here, we don't seem to have a, we're not overwhelmed with number of people to test and the time we have to test them. So that's not happening. So in terms of just trying to be efficient and protect our, our supply PPE, I, I think that having one test site makes more sense. Unless someone has transportation problems, I'm not saying somebody wouldn't and maybe they would, and if they, if they do, I think we ought to solve that problem for the few people that have that challenge. But I would, I would agree that one site is, is sufficient unless we don't have enough capacity to test the number of people coming to that site. And I think that sounds like we do. I have a question on the screening of the, of the people being tested. I understand our screening criteria has changed recently to eliminate, having a temperature to get a screen, to get a test, I should say. Is that the same screening criteria that's happening at other places in the state and even the country? Or is the whole, is this consistently, a consistent screening that's going on in other places or is this something we developed for our own, our own people here?
We take our guidance from KDHE, who takes their guidance from the CDC. And so I can't speak nationally and part of it really depends on the availability of sampling supplies as well. I'll, I'll tell you that initially the, the criteria were very, very tight, in part because there were limited sampling supplies and there was limited capacity at the labs to test. And so I think as some of that has loosened up a little bit and the CDC has made adjustments to their recommendations and KDHE has made adjustments to their recommendations, which we then adopt here locally.
So, so anybody that gets through the screening process, we have, we have plenty of test kits available to test anybody who fits the criteria that gets through the screening process. We have plenty of test kits to, to handle that. Is that correct?
We believe so now, yes.
Well, based on the numbers you gave us, it looks like we have about a 10 weeks, about a nine-week supply right now at the same, you know, you said, you said you did 345 last week and we have over 3,000 test kits available right now and we have 17,000 on order. I assume some of that will come in. So as of today, we have nine weeks worth of testing at that rate and I think the numbers are still continuing to go down. So I would encourage us to, to loosen up the testing requirements as much as possible. Everybody keeps saying more testing is needed and I, I'm not quite sure exactly what you do with that data, but, but that's what we hear, is more testing, more testing, more testing. We have more test kits and so I'm, I'm curious, you know, what is the, what is it going to take for us to, I guess, to utilize that supply more, you know, do more testing to, 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 at least if nothing else, put the community at ease on what's going on in our community? Maybe that's the reason for testing. And to me, if we're, if we have nine-week supply and we have more coming in, we ought to be, we ought to be testing a lot more than 345 in a week. I'm disappointed in those numbers. I would say though, if the criteria is the same from, for Wichita and Sedgwick County as it, as it has other places, one reason our testing numbers are lower is because our incidence of COVID-19 appears to be lower. That's the cause. People ask, well, why are we testing so few people? If a criteria is consistent and we have plenty of supplies available, it's not because we're not trying, we're just don't have the people to test. They don't meet the screening requirements. So to me, that ought to be, ought to be one of our takeaways. But anyway, if we can loosen it, if we have the ability to, to change our own policy to, to consume some of that 3,000, 3,000 test kits, just to make people feel better, I think we ought to do that. I would see, I'd like to see us do a 1,500 next week, if, if we could.
I would agree with you, Commissioner, and I think one of the things that's going on now is that as supplies have become more available, the Health Department has been able to work with KDHE to make some expanded sampling decisions. And one of those Adrian mentioned earlier in her presentation where she talked about sampling any contacts of people who test positive now. In the past, we wouldn't have had the ability to have those samples tested because those people prob, may be asymptomatic and wouldn't meet criteria. Now we're able to test those folks. And so I will tell you that today we have 115 people scheduled for sampling today, 115 people scheduled for sampling today, which is the highest number that we've scheduled so far. I'd like to see us get to 500 or 600 this week and then higher numbers in weeks to come.
But even at that, even at that rate, there's still about five weeks' worth of testing available, you know, testing availability. So we really, we really need to step that up. I mean, there's no reason to hoard the stuff and not use it. This is the time, this is the time to get those test kits done, get people tested. We're talking about, you know, hopefully, hopefully relaxing these orders and seeing some, some freedom returned to the people. And everybody keeps saying that testing is, more testing is needed. And I'm just saying, today, let's, if 115 is scheduled, I wish it was 515 scheduled today. We've got to step the testing up. So just to...
If I could interject.
Yeah, please.
The 2,000 new test kits just showed up yesterday. So we went from minimum amount of test kits to now we have an adequate supply.
Okay.
So we're talking less than 24 hours after we received them. So, and I think lessening the criteria. It used to be you had to have three things before you could come in. Now there's two. You can have any, any one of the two of the three and get in there. So I think working with KDHE to lessen the criteria to get tested, we can't just do anybody, I won't think, random. But I think we're ready now. So
Sure.
We're expressing our anxiety, but it's less than 24-hour news that we have.
But the criteria has changed over a week ago. And even then, we have, we have plenty of test kits to test the people to meet those criteria. So we've not, we've not turned anybody away because we have run out of test kits. That hasn't happened in quite a long time that I'm aware of. So it's time to test, to increase our testing capabilities, or increase our testing numbers as much as possible. And I don't know what the right strategy is to do that, but I would really like to see us increase those numbers and use these test kits as soon as possible. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
I'd like some ZIP code data. I mean, if we could get some data around who is getting tested, just based on ZIP code, could we get that?
We'll have to, I'll talk to the EPUs about that. We'll have to look at the volume that we have per ZIP code because there are some limitations on disclosing information. We don't want to be able to identify anybody specifically. But I think we're probably at the numbers now where we may be able to do some ZIP code data.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. Tim, regarding a second location, if you do need one, if we don't feel that there's adequate locations or whatever, just, yeah, I guess this is the first that I've heard talked about. I thought the one on West Central. And granted, I think it's barely in David Dennis's district, but I drive by it quite frequently because it borders mine. I've never seen anybody out there, I mean, I've seen our employees, but I've never seen anybody out there actually getting tested. So if we do need the testing, I would love staff to come and show me exactly why we need it. And I'd be open to it for a second location if we need it. But from what I've seen, it sounds like, I'm echoing what David Dennis saw, nobody, just staff was out there, nobody was getting tested. And maybe it goes back to what Commissioner Howell said, that we didn't have the test and now we have it. So I think we're, we're so late getting the amount of testing supplies we needed compared to the rest of the country. I think that's why we're in this position where we're even talking how many testing sites we need. So I'm not discounting the need for that. I might, we very well may need that. I would just like you or somebody from the health department that can show me why we need a second location, or if it goes back to what Commissioner Howell said, and that is, we need to find transportation, which I think the county could probably do that with our transportation through aging or other services that we do on a daily basis anyway in the county, which would solve, all of us have rural areas that we represent. I would, I'd love to see that. And hopefully, that could be part of our CARES money that we fund, that we get people, we transport them, and the county would foot that bill with this federal money. So I'm open to the discussion for sure. So thank you. And thanks for always getting back to me so quickly on all these questions that I have from constituents. It's extremely helpful.
Okay.
Chairman, I think Rusty's on the phone to talk about PPEs. And while we're getting him, just to, we were having the discussion, we talk about testing every day, and I'm message received loud and clear on the commission's expectation today. But just yesterday, Tim and I were having the discussion. We had a few hundred test samples yesterday, and within about five minutes, that changed. Keeping in mind that from the onset of COVID, we've been asking multiple sources for test kits and they haven't come. So just, this is a very recent phenomenon to where we're getting more test kits. And it, and it changes our strategy. And I will, Commissioner Howell, to your point, I will have staff work on a more comprehensive presentation on why testing is considered important, even after we crack the county open. It becomes actually more important. And we'll present that next week to you, so you have better data. So with that, Rusty, are you?
Okay. Rusty, are you on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. The volume good?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. All right. Good morning again, Commissioner and Chairman. Today, I don't have a whole lot of update. The OC logistics team is running smoothly at this point. I think our process is working very well and so things are going smoothly. We continue to have routine use and consumption of protective equipment supplies. And with that said, supplies from regular vendors have still not normalized. So while we continue to get small quantities in from various vendors, oftentimes vendors that we have not used in the past, and we get small, very small deliveries, we've had a couple from the state over the past couple of weeks, very small deliveries of various items. So we have some coming in. We have continuous use and, and items going out and being consumed. Currently, we're not in a bad place, but as has been stated before, I think Tim, Tim and Adrian both alluded to the fact that this is a continuous, ongoing product, process. And so we just have to make sure that we continue to get stuff coming in as we use. We need that steady flow and we hope it'll normalize sometime in the near future, but we just don't see that yet. With that said, the one thing that is new, I mentioned last week that we were looking at a couple of potential options for decontaminating N95 masks, while it's not necessarily ideal, ideal. The state of Kansas, we did make a request for a process, a company named Patel had contracted, FEMA had contracted with them, the feds contacted with them. And they had 60 devices that they were going to disseminate across the country. So after we made our request, ultimately, late last week, the Kansas Department of Emergency Management indicated that the state of Kansas is getting one of those and that they are going to house it in Topeka. So this week, everybody is working to understand the process. The state will make arrangements to come down to Sedgwick County and pick up masks from the various agencies. We will have to provide a drop-off site, which we pretty well have organized at this point, to the extent we can, based on what we know. They will come pick them up, they will take them back to Topeka, they will decontaminate them, and then ship them back to Sedgwick County. So that's where we are in that process. Pretty much, all of the big user agencies in Sedgwick County, the hospitals, and the first response agencies that are the biggest consumers, have all indicated an interest and a desire to be part of that. So again, hopefully by the end of this week, we'll have the logistics largely worked out with the state and be starting that process soon. So we'll continue to need new N95 masks. There are very strict guidelines and limitations on this process. When it was approved by the FDA, they set very strict guidelines and limitations on how this has to be managed. The device has to be managed by the company. They have to provide personnel to manage this whole decontamination process. And there are only certain types of masks that they are authorized to, to decontaminate. And those are all basically FDA and NIOSH-approved masks. And the mask cannot have any cellulose fibers in them. So we have to make sure that we are using trusted quality masks, and that's the only thing that we can ship to them. If they're soiled or damaged, they're not going to be decontaminated, they're going to be disposed of, and we'll have to replace them. So this is going to be helpful, but it is a process that we're working through currently. So really, that's all I have for you today. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them for you.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Well, you be, I guess my question is, on our next letter, on Letter B, when we're talking about the gathering orders, my main questions are, when, I think that we've all probably read different plans, like the cosmetology industry, for example, requiring a lot of PPE. Are you concerned that when we open things up and when we start to ease restrictions, that more people will be in the PPE market? And can you speak to that as far as supply and more people needing that type of equipment?
So what I'll say to that is, yes, there is some, some concern about what impact that will have on the already strained demand on protective equipment. What's important is that we try to provide best guidance on what kind of protective equipment they actually are going to need. In a lot of instances, they don't need N95 masks, they need some type of cloth mask, or maybe the surgical-type mask. I don't know that they're going to need, I think a lot of, in a lot of instances, the gloves are not necessarily something that they, in a lot of instances, are going to need. It goes back to, you know, good hygiene, washing hands, having, having the hand sanitizer available. So I think it's important that we, and we're doing this with our own employees in-house as we, as we make plans, you know, we need to make sure that we're getting the right materials in their hands, but that we're not getting more than what they need, competing with our first responders and our medical personnel for supplies that, that they need, that the general public doesn't necessarily need to have in the types of tasks that they're engaged in in their businesses. So that is a concern, that we, that we try to balance that. And again, you know, for our regular vendors that we normally do business with, vendors that we've had, that like EMS has contracts with, if they were back to a position of normalcy, we wouldn't be as concerned. But still yet, the strain on, on those types of equipment are nationwide. And so there's, there's no normalcy yet.
That's good to know. I think it's important we pay attention to that.
Any other questions?
Okay, being none, is that the end of this agenda item, pretty much? I'd just like to close with, we've had a lot of discussion and, and I just want to make sure that our, our staff that's clocking in every day and putting on, putting on protective gear and going out in the field and, and are standing at the testing site, I mean, they're putting themselves at risk every day. And regardless if they're testing five people or 500, I appreciate, and I think our commission totally appreciates, our staff taking on this chore as part of their daily routine. I'm not sure any of us would want to do that. But they clothe up and they test and they expose themselves, along with our first responders and others. But this testing crew, although we've made some comments about what we think should happen, I just want to let them know that I know that we all truly appreciate what they're doing every, every day in doing this. So with that, Madam Clerk, next item.
Move to receive and file.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. It had been a motion to receive and file. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meinsner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item B, discussion of stay-at-home and gathering orders.
Morning Commissioners, Tom Stills, County Manager. And before I start on item B, just one more thing about the KAC conference. We are recording that for you, so you can watch that in duration after the meeting. So appreciate your patience on that. Item B is the continuing discussion of the stay-at-home and gathering order. And just for the sake of the population watching, I thought maybe I'd summarize kind of what's happened since last Friday in this regard. Last Friday, the commission had a special meeting and talked with a handful of business leaders and community leaders from around the county to kind of talk about next steps and what we were looking at as far as a plan to look at releasing restrictions within the county. The, it was a good meeting, and the group that we met with was crystal clear on the need for three things as we move forward. They asked for a clear set of guidelines that were understandable, that would help businesses around the county to open in a safe and responsible manner amongst the COVID outbreak. They wanted some clarity on the usage of PPEs, and they wanted a easy-to-understand measurement tool as we move forward to determine how we're doing as a county in relation to the infection rates. So on Saturday, we stood up a small task force to address all of these issues, made up of county staff and some external people. And they are currently, and have been all week, reaching out to business members and beginning to define these asks that were made at the last Friday meeting. In addition, that I think the commission is aware that the governor's office is going to come out with some type of information sometime this week on a state kind of way forward after the stay-at-home expires on midnight, May 3rd. So with that, I don't know, I just thought it'd be nice to have the commission give them an opportunity today to discuss how they see this or any other further instructions they may have for staff as we move forward on this. I just wanted to give you an update on what we were doing today to manage this. So, that, Chairman?
Okay. Tom, thank you. Regarding that Friday conference call, I want to thank the commission for being a part of it. It was, and I appreciate you all listening and able to comment at the end. A few, a few questions, I think it was very valuable. I know that Dr. Menz had commented to me a couple of times since then that it was really informational for him to hear, and it helped give him some balance and some, in the, I think the, in the public saw the appreciation that some of these industries have really, they haven't been sitting idle. They've been preparing for what's the new, what's the new way to do business and then, and how to open business. So how to open is one challenge and redo it, and then how to go to the new, to the new operating standard. So it was very helpful. I apologize to some that we didn't include some specialized industries. I know we had some feedback that the, that the hair industry and a few others weren't, weren't part of that. It was not anything intentional that we, there's a lot of industries, so we, we tried to do that. So that was very helpful. And, and I don't think it's any secret from the governor's office that she's made it known that, that she will release her plan going forward tomorrow, which is Thursday. And I have not seen the plan yet. And I don't think, unless anybody's, I know there's been a lot of discussion about what should and should not happen. So I'm eager for her to release that plan to see what, to see, so we can get a true look at what is official and, and determine if we want to. But the only other side comment is, I understand that, that this plan, we may have the luxury of, or the, or the, or the job of trying to make it more restrictive. I understand that we may not be able to make it expanded or less restrictive. So that's about the extent of what I know so far. And I'm not sure when she wants to release it, in the morning, in the afternoon, whatever. But, but I think we all ought to be paying great attention to when this happens. Open for any other comments on this item that we have right now? I wish we, if we had something, we could really get into it. We don't really have anything from her, so.
Commissioner?
Well, my, my, I guess my, my questions would be, how effectively will we be able to communicate, taking into account what our folks have asked us for last Friday, the clear plan and communicating to the, to the public? So I guess I would like to, if we don't already have it on the calendar, is for, you know, us to reconvene Friday or sometime after her plan is released, to discuss in, in detail with, if we've had time to read it. I mean, obviously, there's probably going to be a lot to it, I would gather. So I guess that's what I would like to do, is to have a reconvene of, because I feel like it's kind of premature. We can sit here and talk about things, but I mean, we, we kind of should wait until we hear from the governor. I, I think that she'll have some, some guidance for us. And that's what I'd like to do, if possible.
Well, we can pencil in. I think Tom was telling staff, maybe...
We are prepared, if the commission wills to have a Friday meeting.
Maybe mid-morning or something, 10 o'clock or something, so we can have a, have a little bit of time to digest it. of time to digest it. If you, all schedules allow for about a 10 o'clock Friday meeting, we could reconvene.
There's nothing more important right now.
That's true. That's true.
Do I need to make a motion to have a meeting at 10:00 a.m. on Friday, or is that...
The Chairman can do that on his own.
That's fine.
Awesome.
So we'll just call it for 10 o'clock Friday morning. Is that all right with everybody? Okay. I know we've made progress. We see the stats every day, so, yeah. Commissioner Howell, you have something?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say, I hope that we can kind of develop our desire, that we can communicate in whatever way possible to, with the Governor. Hopefully, she'll, she will be able to hear our comments or hear our recommendations, if you will, what would happen at the state level. My opinion is that we have a very diverse state. I believe about two-thirds of our counties have essentially no incidence of COVID in their counties at this time. A lot of our counties have never had a case as of yet, and yet we have a stay-at-home order for the entire state of Kansas. I think that, if anything, I would like to see her trust the counties to make decisions for what's happening in their county. I don't think we need to have a one-size-fits-all order that fits every, should say, that controls what happens in every single county of our state, because we have a very diverse state, and things are different here than they are in our surrounding counties, for example. So first thing I'd like to do is, I hope that we would somehow develop a recommendation to the state that they would allow local control. The very first step, in my opinion, clearly, with all the things that are going on, the stay-at-home order is the most difficult for the community to handle. The other things about social distancing and people limits, you know, trying to keep our group sizes down, recommendations for washing hands and wearing masks if it makes people feel better, in some cases it's necessary, in some cases it's maybe not necessary, depends on what the activity is. But those good, those good recommendations, I think, ought to be part of whatever happens. I think the social distancing probably has the, has had the biggest impact on our ability to flatten the curve here in Sedgwick County. I'm less convinced that the closing of businesses had any, any impact. I don't know for sure, I don't, we don't have any empirical evidence that it has had an impact. I think that if we're going to do one thing to move the ball in the other direction, it should be an elimination of the stay-at-home order as a first step. So I hope that that doesn't get, does not get reinstated. I know we've received some information from the Advisory Committee to Dr. Menz, that they would like to see this extended by a week. I have yet to see the data that would support a need for that. So I think that we ought to make recommendations to Dr. Menz as well, that the stay-at-home order is not needed. We can continue to monitor what happens inside the hospitals, but we don't have a compelling argument that continued restrictions on the, on the business community is helpful. In fact, I would say that there may be more harm than good. If the people who are getting the virus are getting the care they need, and there's resources available, then that box has been checked. But by continuing a very difficult order is actually harming people in other ways. And so I would like to make sure that we don't do something that's not necessary based on the data we have here in Sedgwick County. I don't think, I mind the gathering limits as much. The stay-at-home order is my number-one thing. That needs to be expired here in Sedgwick County as soon as possible. I still have questions about May the 3 versus the end of this month. I know that the state's order is dependent upon an emergency declaration of the state of Kansas. I don't know how they'll extend, how that order is, right now is planned to expire on May the 3, but there's questions, even from state legislators I spoke with, you know, how it is that she has the authority to have an order out to May 3 when the declaration of state of emergency ends the end of this month. So I still have questions about that. Maybe Mr. Papun can talk on that. But I would just say this, the, I received some information that, you know, statewide, the largest hospital network in Kansas, as of last week, had 11 COVID cases statewide, and two of those 11 were on ventilators. If that's true data, that was a reliable source, and if that's data that...
Are you going to say what source it is?
I will not say. But I'm just saying, it's a trustworthy source, I'll just say that. If that's true, then it's time to move forward. We don't want anybody to get hurt or harmed by not having policy that makes sense, but if that's a true number, then we really ought to move the ball in the other direction at this time.
That's, that's hard to digest. We're all in very confidential discussions in, with various people.
That's why I can't disclose my source, but I'll just tell you, we all have people...
But then you're asking us to say that if that's true, let's do this. So it's difficult for us to do.
I understand.
I respect, but I do respect what you're saying on that. It's a, it's a difficult time with, with that kind of, I can't make a decision based on that kind of...
Well, I'm concerned that the state will do something that will extend the stay-at-home. I don't know that they will, but even Dr. Menz, I understand, is being pressured by some folks to extend the stay-at-home. Again, I'd like to have the data to say that that makes sense. We have to have the data, and right now, we don't have the data. I think we ought to make recommendations to the Governor, or we ought to make recommendations to Dr. Menz. And by the way, if there is going to be a stay-at-home order, I understand correctly, he solely has the authority in Sedgwick County to make that declaration here in Sedgwick County. But the Commission and Dr. Menz both have the authority to make policy on person limits. And so I would like to ask that Dr. Menz would allow the County Commission to make that decision for Sedgwick County and let us, if you will, throttle, if you will, our policy based on what's happening in our own community. The County Commission, as a Board of Health, ought to have that authority, and we ought to have the right to exercise that authority, even though Dr. Menz could do it, so.
Mike, would you like to address the...
Yes, I'd be happy to. Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, County Counselor. Commissioner Howell, we've, we have been aware of the potential gap of coverage on this between May 1 and May 3, and been looking at it. I've had discussions with Chief Counsel, the Governor, Clay Britton. Mr. Britton is confident that they have the authority to extend this order till May 4, but he didn't provide any legal analysis to why he has that authority, as you've heard from legislators, as we've seen in the media, newspapers. There have been people questioning the Governor's authority beyond that time. We have found that there potentially, like a 15-day extension the Governor can have beyond the original emergency order that could possibly be the authority the Governor is using, but I'm not privy to all the facts that the Governor's Office has, who they've been talking to, and what authority they have, and without that, really can't give a definitive answer to whether that order will be effective from May 1 to May 4, so.
If I understand correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but the initial declaration of emergency for our state had to be ratified, if you will, by the legislature. And I can just say, a couple of days ago, 86 legislators signed a letter saying that they want this to stop. That is a majority of the 165 legislators in our, in our state legislature. So for her to extend this beyond the end of this month, I don't know where she gets her authority, and if she can do it, that is, that's, it'll be interesting to see how that happens, but I can, I can tell you that the legislature doesn't, does not appear to be supportive of her going beyond the current orders that are in place, at least for the stay-at-home. And so if that expires on May the 3, for her to extend that particular order any longer, she doesn't seem to have the support of the legislature itself.
Well, it's great discussion, but we're not, we're not a court system, and we're sure not the Supreme Court, but to interpret all of that. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One point that Commissioner Howell said that I do agree with, and that is, it would be great, and maybe we already have been, but in a more formal process, let the Governor's Office know that we would like to develop our own. I know when I talked to you yesterday afternoon, Mr. Chairman, I was watching Johnson County was talking, they had their group that they had organized together yesterday afternoon on Facebook, and it was fascinating, because they're in the same position we are. They want to move forward in a very pragmatic and responsible and safe way to reopen their economy. So I feel if the Governor's Office understands that the two largest counties, we're over a third of the state population, just our two counties, are moving forward, and like Commissioner Howell said, two-thirds of the counties have no cases, one or two or three cases, that's it total, according to KDHT's website. So I think if we're able to alert the Governor's Office to that, that would be a good position for us to say, hey, we're going to do this, and we'll work hand-in-hand with them, because everybody, I believe the Governor's staff wants to do this and keep us safe as well. The other, the other issue that I'd like you to expound on, Mr. Chair, is the confusion about the Medical Society of Sedgwick County, what had happened, because that was my frustration yesterday, and I copied everybody on my email that I'm very disappointed in the way the Medical Society handled the rollout of that panel, because it was not, in my opinion, explained very well in the initial email we received, Mr. Chairman. If you could expound on that.
Well, that, we all received a letter from this, a group of medical professionals at 11 o'clock yesterday at Monday.
Monday.
Monday, 11 o'clock, and that immediately got the attention of a lot, of social media and, and regular media. And since then, we've received a letter from the same author, kind of retracting that they weren't in making a recommendation, they were stating opinions. I don't, I don't have it in front of me, but it was kind of a retraction that I think that we all received to try to clarify.
It wasn't a retraction from, it was, it was an explanation that it wasn't a statement put out by the MSSC, it was these group, it was these physicians. They didn't change what they, they told us. Their, I guess, their recommendation is still the same, they were just stating that it didn't come from the MSSC, it came from this group of physicians. So the message was the same, there was confusion about which party actually put it out. So let's not be, let's not be confused about the actual message of what they were trying to get across.
I'm not confused about the actual message. The actual message, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chairman, is that the Medical Society of Sedgwick County does not take a formal position on reopening the economy. Is that how you understand it, Mr. Chair?
That's true, yeah.
The initial notice we received on Monday said that they were requesting us to extend the stay-at-home order, and they clarified it the next day because of pushback within the medical community in Sedgwick County, if that's what, that's what I understand. Is that what you understand, Mr. Chairman?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted that out there, so hopefully the media can, oh, I know, I know, Commissioner Howell, oh yeah, I saw it. I just wanted that for discussion, that the Medical Society of Sedgwick County has no official position on our plan to gradually reopen the economy.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, I'll try and be brief.
Okay.
First of all, I just want to discuss businesses opening. We had a great meeting Friday with WebEx, where we got to hear from a number of different types of organizations. Granted, it didn't have every single type of organization on that conference call, but the bottom line is, every one of these businesses know that they want to go back into business again, and they are already thinking through the process that they need to make sure that their employees are safe and the public is safe. And that's what I took away from Friday. Yesterday, I was sitting on a WebEx meeting with the zoo, and it was the same exact thing. The zoo has been thinking through the process of what it's going to take when, when the stay-at-home order is over. They're looking at how to protect their animals, how to protect their employees, and how to protect the public. And they've got an entire protocol already put together, and I think most of the different organizations and businesses that want to reopen already know what their protocol is for reopening, and reopening safely. As I said last week, there is not one organization that wants to be identified as a COVID cluster, and they know that that's going to be detrimental to their business in the future. So they're thinking through this right now. Government does not need to stand in the way of them developing their protocols. We need to give very broad guidelines, mainly things like social distancing and so forth, or what it's going to be required, and then the businesses can move ahead. And they've thought of things right down to the point where restaurants are talking about paper menus, so that they can throw them away, not putting condiments on the tables, having the tables spread out so that between families, there's at least six feet and so forth. So, and the zoo is thinking the same thing. They're going to go to online ticketing only. You're going to have a time that you can show up at the zoo, so that we're not going through and stacking people up in a queue. They, they're going to have a cleaning crew going around cleaning constantly, that people can identify, because they're going to have brightly colored shirts saying that they're a cleaning crew. So they've got a whole list of protocols, and all the businesses are doing this. So again, once that, we find out what the Governor's doing, and I don't know if we need to express to her before that she comes out tomorrow, that we would like the control to come back to the counties, so that we can help make the decision of what's best in Sedgwick County. But right now, I see that the businesses are doing what it takes to be prepared to open. The ones that have been open all along have evolved. I talked to the folks at Star Lumber, and they have made a number of changes as this has gone along, to make sure that they're protecting their employees and the community. So I am not fearful of what the businesses are doing. Anyway, I probably said more than I should have, but thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, I'm with you. The businesses and the industries have done a tremendous job making their own guidelines, their own protocol to how to open, and then how to operate going forward. And it's been very impressive to see and to hear that information. So I didn't know your zoo thing, but I'm not surprised. I mean, they're, because they care about their businesses and they care about their customers. So it's a great statement.
One thing I'd like to just discuss for a second is, you know, what would be the threshold for things should a second wave, we've all heard of that, what happens then? Our hospital systems are now opening up elective surgeries. We, before this, we had a pretty tapped hospital system. So what happens if something does break out and the second wave is worse than the first? You know, I think it's really important for us to help people who don't have the resources that say some big businesses do, some, you know, mom-and-pop shops or individual business owners. I think that they are looking to us to help them with guidelines, and I think it's important for us to make sure that we look out for the little guy. The other thing is, you know, just the basics of, you know, wearing masks, washing hands, socially distanced, but those who can work from home, please continue doing that. How do we handle, you know, folks who, we haven't addressed childcare for those children who are out? I think there's a lot of things that we have to consider when it comes to parents going back to work and all of the children at home that would normally be in school, that now everybody's scrambling to figure out what they're doing with their children and making sure that they're safe. So there's a lot to consider when it comes to this. I'm hopeful that the Governor has thought through this, and I think that she has. I'm going to, I'm going to be hopeful and positive that her team of professionals at the State House have done a lot of research. I have heard from a couple of folks, and I know that they're really taking this into consideration. But I think that we have to understand, what is the worst-case scenario should another outbreak happen? What is our contingency plan? How do we handle that moving forward with the medical system doing normal routine things plus dealing with COVID-19? Those are my concerns, is we have to pay attention to that. That's, there's so much to consider, I think, when you look at, when you look at it all, but I really want us to understand that there could be a second wave of this virus, and if people don't take personal responsibility to keep themselves safe, if they're feeling ill, stay at home. I think that we have to have a robust communication plan, Mr. Manager, and I know that we're kind of working on that, to make sure that, you know, we get as much information out and help those folks who have questions about what to do, because not everybody has the resources to make a big plan, and so they are kind of looking to us. That's really all I have.
Well, I agree. I think everybody, I mean, the reality is, if a wave hits us again in the fall or the winter, then the health officials and everybody will go back to, or they'll adjust the plan from what we've learned in the past, best practices, and make a better, a better order at that time, if it, if and when, if it comes back. So I hope that the, you mentioned childcare, I'm hoping that the childcare industry has been working, I mean, I trust they probably have, but, because they're all licensed and they go through their own organization, so I don't have the answer for that, but I'm sure, hopeful that, that they have their guidelines and their best practices ready to publish, if they haven't already, but I don't know that, Ms. Cruz, so I don't. ready to publish, if they haven't already. But I don't know that, Ms. Cruz, so I don't.
Ms. Chair, one of the things that I've been just very encouraged and heartened by is the fact that the community is so eager to abide by guidelines and regulations. And they're asking us whether it's, we're all getting phone calls, I'm sure, every day. I've got a couple of the biggest churches in Wichita calling me yesterday, asking about guidelines. I had small restaurants text me this morning, calling me yesterday, retail stores. I think people are eager and looking for a pragmatic solution. And so we've done a really, really truly exemplary job of bending that curve to keep the hospitals low. And according to Commissioner Howell, and what we've seen with KDHE, we're at 61 cases, which is astonishingly low that have been in the hospital. So I think that we can move forward. The community wants to move forward with us and isn't going to be doing anything stupid because they are anticipating a second string of this come the fall. So we're going to continue to monitor it. Commissioner Cruz mentioned the added communication from us. I think that's important. We know we have funding from the government to help us do that. So I'm eager to get this train on the tracks, talk to our professionals, but do this reopen in a very responsible, pragmatic manner. And we can do, and we've proven to do it, and the community's done a great job. But I think it's, they're at the point now where, I think all of us mentioned, we drove by Lowe's or Home Depot this weekend. It looked like Black Friday, busy as it's been around. There were no clusters. We haven't heard anything negative about that. But every week, it just seems to be growing exponentially, the amount of people that are out. So we've done a really good job, and the citizens of Sedgwick County should be applauded for that because they've done a sensational job of social distancing and bending that curve.
Right. Okay, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And that last comment, it sounds like something that Commissioner Dennis said last week, actually. And I echoed that as well. You can go to Lowe's and you can see a huge number of people. But one of the reasons I think you see so many people at that particular store, because they have less places to go. They'll go to one place that's open. And so, you know, I know it was well-intentioned, but I think it potentially had an unintended consequence. And even at Lowe's, you know, they've made precautions within that store. And I would tell you that our definition of social distancing, I believe, was actually honored, if you will, by the people at that store because it requires, if you will, less than six feet distance between two people for 10 minutes or more. And if I understand their definition, I think that's what we call social distancing. So I would tell you, in that store, and I have visited there, and I have, people are not hanging out in their own, you know, close together, breathing on each other, that type of thing. So I think people have been very, very good. And with that, I think we ought to trust our citizens. They understand the risk. And they have the greatest interest in protecting themselves and their families. They'll take precautions. We should allow them to have some management over their own behaviors and their own activities. This is really not about essential and non-essential as much as it's about managing risk. And I've said that last week as well. I think we ought to be interested in managing risk. And we ought to be looking at what's going on inside the hospitals to help drive that policy. Local control is better. I don't think that we need to have a one-size-fits-all order from the state of Kansas. We ought to continue to recommend best practices, things like social distancing, wearing of masks in certain activities. And if anybody feels that they want to wear a mask, certainly we'd encourage them to do so. Washing hands, some activities, wearing disposable gloves. That'd be very smart. But those best practices are recommended. And I think that even the recommendations from the Advisory Committee of the Medical Society made some of the same recommendations. Businesses are innovative. I think Commissioner Dennis made that comment. They're very innovative. They're finding ways to mitigate risk. And they're doing some really smart things. And that may not change. I mean, no matter what we do here, when they get back into business, even after COVID-19's long history, those practices may continue long into the future because it's just being smart. And so they're very innovative. And I think that, I was very impressed last Friday when I heard the ideas of these businesses. They did a great job presenting, if you will, ways to mitigate risk, and I think they did a great job. With that, I think we ought to make a recommendation to the governor and to Dr. Menz. And I would like to make a motion this morning. My motion would be this. We would make a recommendation to Governor Kelly and to Dr. Menz to not extend the stay-at-home order and to allow the Board of Health, the County Board of Health, to manage the person limit policy. And that's very simple. So with that, I would like to make that motion.
I'll second that.
Hey, can you repeat the motion, please?
Yes, the motion is very specifically, recommendation to Governor Kelly and to Dr. Menz to not extend the stay-at-home order and to allow the County Board of Health to manage the person limit policy.
So my question to that is, how do we plan to do that in four days? How do we plan to roll out a plan in four days and communicate it to the community? Do you have that plan written that you could share with us, that we could all hash out right now?
We have seen, thank you for the question, we have seen numerous plans recommended by different counties, different governing bodies, even within our own county, all kinds of ideas on things that should be included or can be contemplated in that policy.
And you think we can get that done in four days?
Well, the reality is, I think her order is going to end probably on May the 3rd regardless. And I asked that we would have this particular meeting yesterday and again last Friday for that very reason. I think the four days is not enough. But that's the reality we live in, and so having four days to do that is where we're at. And so I agree that that's not much time, but thankfully, there's lots of documents out there for us to reflect upon and to contemplate, and I think we can get this done.
And Johnson County has their plan outlined, too, that we can mimic.
I don't see it happening in four days, so I won't be supporting this motion.
Well, I would like to change it around to say that we recognize that our local businesses and industries have expressed guidelines on record that we would recognize as a footprint of going forward instead of us taking the responsibility to come up with this in four days.
If you amend the motion, I'd be happy to second that.
You all know how comfortable I am with tossing stuff out there with motions and remotions. So I, as it stated, I think it's a large task to do. But I just got a message from Tom. You have some questions, Tom, if I could interject.
Well, one technical and one not so technical. A 10:00 Friday meeting, was that the will of the commission? Okay, very good. And then the second, I just want to make sure that, how I described what the task force is doing, the reaching out to businesses now, and it's basically a public and private discussion of regulations and guidelines. Is that the will of the commission to continue that? Or are we to stand down and let the businesses craft their own regulations? I need a little bit of guidance on what you want staff to do from this point forward. We had left it Friday that it was going to be a public-private kind of endeavor, letting the businesses drive this. And many of them, as the commission has already mentioned, are well ahead of this curve. They've got really nice plans written. But we were going to try to craft that into a more global kind of document for those that maybe that don't have the resources to do that. So I'm just needing a little bit of direction on what you want the task force and the staff to work on over the next few days here.
Can I just say something real fast? You know, I think one thing that, and I have my notes from the meeting broken down by each individual business. And one thing I think that was reiterated over and over was opening in a responsible manner. And I think all of us have been working feverishly, night and day. We have been reading. We have been trying to understand exactly what we should do. And I think haphazardly putting a plan together just to have a plan to put in place with people, I don't believe is the best course of action. I think it's important that we take our time and really think through all of this before we just lay it out there. Because who knows if it's even going to work for them? That would be my recommendation. I think we did hear about being responsible, doing it in a well-thought-out way. And I just, I want things to open. I just don't know that we can do it in four days and communicate it effectively to the entire community in that short amount of time. I wish we could. And the other thing is, how do we know that the governor isn't going to give us local control? I mean, I think that we're saying, I think that it's kind of premature for us to sit here and say that we think she's going to do this. We think she's going to do that. I think that we should have, I think we should be more thoughtful with this.
Well, she took it away on May 1st. Why wouldn't she take it away again?
Are we arguing or are we talking? Is this an argument or is this a discussion?
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I will support the motion mainly because I believe that the businesses are the ones that are in the right position to decide what's right for their employees and for their customers. I never have believed in big government. And for us to try and write a set of rules that apply to every different type of business that we have in Sedgwick County, none of us have enough time left on the commission to be able to do that, to get these businesses back open. So I don't believe in big government. I think the guidance that we put out need to be things like social distancing. You have to have a plan that says that people are six foot apart. If we want to throw in things like masks for different things, that's fine, but general guidelines. I'll give you an example. The other day, I got a phone call from a lady that runs a dance studio. And so I asked her, I said, "Do you have any protocols?" Well, at that time, she didn't. But she wrote them up and sent them to me, and I forwarded them to Tom. We've seen protocols from all kinds of different organizations. They're in the best position to put the protocols in place to fit their needs. We are not in the best position. Government needs to step back from this and give broad guidelines. And I think those broad guidelines can be put together in an afternoon, let alone having to worry about us whether we're ready on Friday or not. So if I was going to tell the public listening anything right now, I'd say, "Make sure your protocols are in place." And I realize there are going to be some little small mom-and-pop places out there. But there are, for example, if you've got a small taco shop or something like that, that there are already restaurants that are putting together protocols that say how to do that. So if they have questions, we've got those. They've already provided them to us. We can send them the information that other organizations put together. But I think it's time for government to get out of the way and businesses to be able to get back to work.
Well, I'm much more comfortable with saying six feet guidelines and leave it at that instead of writing 25 industry protocols. But there is a motion and a second on the floor that doesn't say what you just said, David. Your motion, if you want to repeat it.
But aren't we meeting on Friday to go over those types of things, like David mentioned in his motion?
I don't think this motion addresses us putting together individual guidelines right now. Am I wrong, Commissioner Howell?
In fact, I have a lot of ideas on that. We can talk about that as soon as possible. I hope we can do that at the latest on Friday. I would like to do it sooner than that, if possible. I think the businesses ought to have advance notice as much as possible so they can react. It's going to take some of them a little bit of time to get employees called back in. It's going to take some time for them to get PPE in place if they haven't done so already. So them to be able to contemplate for a number of days is better than last minute. When we shut this, when these orders were placed out there, they had almost no notice. And it was devastating to many of these businesses. So to give them as much notice as possible, that we're moving in the other direction, is the best we can do. And I understand that we may not do it right the first time. We can always adjust and tweak our policy. If we find we have deficiencies or holes that we should have spoken to, we didn't speak to them, we can always amend those policies. But moving in that direction, I think the idea that we would encourage social distancing and all the other best practices, like non-shaking hands and everything else we've talked about, that ought to be part of our policy, but it shouldn't be regulated. And there's a difference between regulation and recommendation. And I think we have to recommend certain things. And I think the idea of allowing these businesses to be innovative and present back to us their plan ought to be a starting point.
I just think when we deal with people's lives, we have to take a little bit more consideration. I mean, we're the Board of Health. That's our job. We're supposed to take into consideration people's lives. And I am not comfortable doing that in four days. I'm just not.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a couple of comments. One, I would like to hear the motion reread prior to my comments, if I could. Me to the clerk or Mr. Howell? Mr. Howell.
Okay, I'll reread it. My motion is that we would make a recommendation to Governor Laura Kelly and to Dr. Gerrold Menz to not extend the stay-at-home order and to allow the Sedgwick County Board of Health to manage the person limit policy.
You're telling Dr. Menz that the Board of Health wants to manage the personal policy, not him?
That is correct. I'd like to make a recommendation to Dr. Menz that he does not extend the stay-at-home, and then they would both allow the County Board of Health to make the person limit policy.
I can see part of that, but the doctor is more qualified than.
My point is, we're the elected officials. We represent our community, and we know best what's going on in this community. We're hearing from all sorts of input. We have the most balanced perspective of everything that's going on. I don't want anybody to get hurt, but I don't want to hurt people needlessly if we're not helping somebody also. So we're trying to find that very narrow balance.
I would agree with exactly what you said. I'm not voting to hurt people needlessly.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for pointing that out for me. But you're saying, "I don't mind the stay-at-home," because we don't even know you might find. The governor, I think, wants to open Kansas back up for business. But, so the stay-at-home thing may be a mute issue. But I do have problems with recommending to Dr. Menz that he gives us authority to do everything. So I have a problem with that. It might not even be legal.
So we have, to be clear, we don't have the authority to issue a stay-at-home order. Only he does, for the county level. So we're making a recommendation to him that he has, with the motion, recommendation that he does not extend the stay-at-home order as was recommended by the Advisory Committee for one more week, which is why he's gotten input from the medical community. That's what they would like.
Have you talked to him since then?
No, sir, I've not.
Okay, I have. And he understands exactly what we just talked about earlier.
I've also talked to him and heard the same thing.
He knows there was a conflict among the medical community on, so that's, I guess that's more prevalent than I thought before in the past.
As a Board of Health, this is our chance to be heard. And so I think we ought to make a recommendation on these two issues. Thank you.
I will, I can anticipate the Board of Health taking total control. And I'm not going to be reading inches and inches and pages and pages of ideas. And five of us try to be the Board of Health on everything. So I'm okay with that. I'm just telling you what I think.
So, Ms. Chair, what I gathered was Commissioner Howell was just saying this is our recommendation to him. Obviously, he still has the statutory authority to put a stay-at-home order in place. He has a statutory authority to, I don't know why I can't say statutory today. That's crazy. The statutory authority that would allow him to put a gatherings number in place. I think this is just letting him know our opinion on this. And I have full respect in Dr. Menz. I like him. I respect him. So this isn't me trying to limit him. This is just, we understand, we're not the final authority. That is Governor Laura Kelly, Secretary Lee Norman, Dr. Menz. They're the authority right now. We're just relaying our opinion based on what we've seen, what we've researched and heard, that this is what we would like. But also respect, if Dr. Menz comes out on Monday, will I be happy that he extends the stay-at-home order? No, but I'll respect it. So I don't think we're trying to muzzle him.
Who hires him?
We do.
Oh, really? So if we make a vote and recommend this, and he does that, then is the next motion that we recommend that you fire Dr. Menz?
Of course not. And this is what we got in, but a month ago, he suggested delaying the stay-at-home order. And the county commission said, "We want to start it sooner." That Sunday, he came in, he goes, "Oh, we're nowhere near a stay-at-home order yet." The next day, the county commission comes and says, "Yes, we are." So I don't think we can pick and choose when we want to listen to Dr. Menz. So I think just give him our opinion, and then we can hear back from him. And this gives him time till Friday to get back to us. And maybe that's how we amend the motion. We ask for feedback from him. This is our opinion. Get feedback from him. But I don't think we should be in a position where we're threatening his job or where we're ignoring his advice when he says, "Don't start a stay-at-home order," or taking his advice when he says, "Do a stay-at-home order." I think we need to have better dialogue with him, let him know what we're hearing, and not get into some nasty back and forth because we are dealing with people's lives and we're dealing with people's livelihood. And there's a lot more to physical health than the coronavirus. We know the mental health problems. Just this last weekend, in my district, we had a murder-suicide. Now, was that a death because of coronavirus? No. But was the individual able to go and see their therapist, psychiatrist, get out and about? No. And we're seeing domestic violence increase. We're seeing a lot of other problems. We're seeing delayed medical care, and people are dying, truly dying, because they're scared about going to the hospital and leaving their houses. We're having people email the county commissioners to say, "I have COPD. Can I go see my doctor?" We are sending a lot of bad messages out there. And I think we need to send a message now to Dr. Menz and the governor that we believe the stay-at-home order should expire Monday. That's my opinion. I'm just one vote. But I respect Dr. Menz a lot. I'll renew his contract the same day that he ignores my opinion. Bring it to us on Monday. If he says no, I'll still hire him because I do respect him. He's far. He's far smarter on medical issues than I will ever be or ever pretend to be.
Yes. Commissioner Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, the first word in the motion was "recommend."
Correct.
So it does not have any kind of force. It's not telling them that they have to do this. It starts out with the "recommend." And I think as the Board of Health, we ought to be putting recommendations out. We can't just stand by passively and allow other people to direct things that are impacting people's lives every day. So that's why I would support this, is because it's not something that says they have to do it. We're just saying that this is our recommendation.
So I guess, I'm trying to do all the what-ifs. So if we recommend, and if Dr. Minz comes back and says, "Hey, Friday, you guys are recommending that you take over," he didn't have to work. Is that according to the motion? Right?
That's what I take it as.
I mean, you're saying, "You recommend," and he says, "I recognize your recommendation. I'm done."
No, we need his feedback.
Well, I'm just saying, let's just, I don't want, not being extreme, I'm listening to words, because that's what everybody else is, in the media and everything else, is listening to words right now. One wrong word, and we get, we're in the headlines. So the second part of your motion, I have trouble with.
Well, Mr. Chairman, the reality is, this should not be an either-or. Dr. Minz and the Board of Health ought to work together. Unfortunately, when the borders came out on May, on March 23rd, Dr. Minz took the reins by, he took the reins and made that policy on his own. It wasn't necessarily the Board of Health that input into what he chose to do. It was, he made the decision. I think we ought to be more collaborative than that. And I would expect him to continue to dialogue and discuss and meet with the Board of Health, and let's work together. But the end of the day, there's got to be some authority, whether it be Dr. Minz or the Board of Health. And unfortunately, the state statutes empower both of us. We have the power, according to the state statutes, on the gathering limits, but not on the stay-at-home. Only Dr. Minz has that. So that's why I use the word "recommend." I like to recommend that. But, you know, last week, we talked about the person limit idea that we should be based on the size. Again, this is about risk mitigation. If you have a taco shop that seats, you know, two tables, 10 people doesn't make sense necessarily. But if you have a very large facility, 10 people is a very small number. So we talked about changing that person limit based on the size. That's what I think the county commission, the Board of Health, could be more, if you will, we can be very thoughtful on how we develop that policy.
I think the restaurant industry has already done that for us.
But here's the thing. I anticipate the state's going to issue a gathering ban limit that's going to be similar to what we have had in the past, of 10 persons that are not able to social distance, and then they'll watch that for 14 days, and it'll go from that to 35, and then from that to 75, and then from that to 250. So over a period of about eight weeks, they'll ratchet this up very slowly. The question is, that's an arbitrary number. Is that the right policy? I think we ought to have a right to speak to it. In fact, I think we could do a great job as a Board of Health. We're tuned into our community. We ought to have the right to be very thoughtful and take into those comments and make the best policy for Sedgwick County. We don't need the governor or the state of Kansas, KDHE, to make that policy for us. And if Dr. Minz would stand alongside of us, we could have dialogue and discussion and collaborate, develop this best policy, that's a great idea.
But that's not in your motion, sir. That's not in your motion, collaboration.
Okay. My motion is very simple.
To take over from his.
My motion is that we would recommend to Dr. Minz and to the governor.
Can we amend it to collaborate with Dr. Minz and work with Dr. Minz?
All right, let me see if I can do that. So my motion, if you will, I'd like to amend my motion.
Yes, please.
That we would recommend to Governor Kelly and to Dr. Minz to not extend the stay-at-home order, and that we would collaborate with Dr. Minz to develop a person limit policy for Sedgwick County.
I'll second that.
Any other dialogue about that?
Mr. Chairman, if I could jump back in for a second to get a couple of points of clarification. And I appreciate Commissioner Howe rereading that motion. Is there any thought from the board on how we're going to communicate this? This is about the third meeting in a row. I've been sending letters or emails out to various people. And is this just going to be the action, official action in a public meeting of the board? Or is there an email or a letter going out from the chairman? Or how is this recommendation going to be communicated to Dr. Minz and the governor?
My, on timing, I could send an email to both of them.
Okay. And the other thing, just a couple of points of clarification. The manager, county manager, Tom Stoltz, is actually the person that hires Dr. Minz. It's not the Board of County Commission.
Okay.
Just some discussion.
Thank you for clarifying that.
So I can't fire him?
And Tom?
You can fire Tom, and then...
I'm just kidding. We need some levity.
And Tom, you've heard, you've been here in the discussion. I don't know if your staff should be working with the industries, or if we take that job over and your staff take the rest of the time off, but we'll work that out.
Okay. I mean, just a couple of points of clarity on that. First of all, some of the industries that got left out of Friday, we have reached out to, hair salons and some of the people, as you forwarded emails to me, we're assimilating all that.
Right.
And I think the goal of, and Tanya Cole's heading this up, was to work with these, and we're up to about 20 industrial sectors.
Oh, really? That's good.
And we were going to work with those sectors and come up with a one-pager of guidelines and then reference policies within. That was kind of the goal, was not necessarily to create or tell business what to do, but assimilate the information that they're giving to us and marketing it and communicating it in a legible way that everybody can access and understand. That's really kind of what we were trying to do. And if we're on the right track on that, I want to make sure the commission's comfortable with that. Or if you want us just to back completely out and let industry run with that, I'm okay with that, too. I just need to understand what the will of the commission is on what we want staff to do moving forward with this. That's what I thought or heard Friday, but if that's not what you heard, then we need to, maybe, I need some clarity on that, is all.
Well, I think, from my perspective, I think if a shop calls, a food shop, or any industry calls and says, "What's the recommendation? How do I get back in business?" I'd love to be able to say, "Hey, go to this. This is the recommendation. According to the, our staff worked with industry, here's the recommendation of what you should be doing." With rules, there's rules about six foot that are statutory, but the recommendation, that's what I, but I guess you need to bring 20 recommendations to us, and then we can go through each one of them. And hopefully, we can come to an agreement without tearing them apart too much, trusting that the industry has done a great job talking about their own industry, unless we, five of us, become experts in 20 industries. That's the future I can't predict.
And I'll give you just a real quick example of what we could be talking about. The restaurant industry, for example, they've done a lot of great work already on this. And they're, many of them are focusing on a percentage of capacity. They don't want to go back to 100% capacity. So many of them are throwing around numbers like 50% or 70% or 30%. And yet, depending on what the governor's order says, maybe it's a situation where you can pack as many as you can in there, not going over clusters of 10, but maintaining six feet in between those. So those are the kinds of technical kinds of detail that I think they look to us to give some guidance on, and they want a fair playing field out there amongst their industry. So they've got great ideas, and they'll do it for us. It's just that we're in a position, we're trying to assimilate all this and come up with a, you know, a one-pager that maybe references a larger plan so that people can understand it across the spectrum. That's where we were headed. And if that's not what the will of the commission is, we'd be glad to modify that or stand it down. I just want to make sure that we're, I think that's what we thought we heard on Friday. So.
I think we have to think about the phased approach that a lot of professionals are telling us to consider. When you try to factor in Little League, for example, kids in a dugout, when you talk about summer camp, when you talk about large parades, graduations, those kinds of things, are we, as the Board of Health, going to set limits? Or what, I mean, I guess my thing is, I don't know that I, can we really do that in four days? I mean, there is so much to consider. When you, when you talk about the other, like Singapore and Japan, they've already opened up, and now they're seeing a second wave. I mean, the things that we need to consider are, it's a lot. I mean, are you saying, so what are you saying about Little League, for example? If we open up on the 4th, what is your recommendation to tell baseball leagues, softball leagues? What are you going to say? If you want to make the decision, what are you going to say?
Well, if I, Commissioner Davis, go ahead.
They've already sent us the protocols that they've got in place. So we've got them. They're thinking about these things. That's what I'm saying. We don't have to think about all this. They're already doing it. They've sent us a complete list. You can't have sunflower seeds. You got to set apart. You got to bring lawn chairs and set out. I mean, they've got a whole list of things that they sent us, so.
So we just throw out all of the recommendations from experts about a phased approach?
I don't know that we need to worry about that, other than the...
We shouldn't worry about experts' opinions on a phased approach?
No, we've got to take a look at gathering size. That's one of our things that is in our statute. We can talk about gathering size. But...
But if that's what we're supposed to limit, I mean, I get it that places have already been thinking about that. But if it's our responsibility to talk about the limiting of sizes, how do you handle a baseball team when you have, how do you handle that? I guess that's one of my questions. I get it that they have taken the time to thoroughly think it out and have provided that to us, but when we set limits, are you saying to set no limits? I'm asking you, because you're the one making the motion. Are you asking to set no limits?
I think the industries know best how to mitigate risk at their level. We could receive, if you will, their recommendations unless something sounds inadequate, then we probably don't have a reason to speak on every single business that's out there. Let them lead.
But gathering limits.
And again, I said before, I think we should make recommendations rather than regulations. You know, to enforce this is going to be impossible, even at the state level. At some point, they're going to lift a stay-at-home order, and they're going to have some type of less of an order at the state level. I assume that it will not include a stay-at-home. At some point, we're going to have to move towards trusting our citizenry and let them help us come up with the right recommendations. And hopefully, they will follow that. I would like to just remind ourselves that we are the elected representatives of our people. We have got to, we've got to speak to this, and we have to do it in a way that trusts the people, and it should be sooner than later. And, you know, again, I think Dr. Minz needs to have the elected officials collaborate with him before he simply makes these on his own. And the stay-at-home order, in my opinion, has ran its course. It's time for us to move back towards freedom. And I need a haircut. So I think we all need haircuts, at his point. It's time for us to get the businesses back open. And if they can do this in a way that mitigates risk, then we ought to let them speak to that, let us understand what that is. If it makes sense, we ought to let that be our next step. And it doesn't need to be an arbitrary number, it needs to be smart. And if all those best practices are being employed, each one of these types of industries, then that makes sense. We might see some small, you know, uptick in the number of cases, but as long as our hospitals are managing the resources at the hospital level, then we're okay.
But it's about contact tracing, and that's the reason why there are limits being set, is because the number of people that are available to track down every single person that a positive person has come in contact with, do we have that capacity? Do we have the ability to contact every single person that someone has come in contact with? It comes down, that's the reason why there are limits, because of contact tracing. So do we have that information? Do we have that ability?
Well, I've talked to Director Adrian Byrne, and she, they are doing contact tracing on these positive cases. They've invested a huge amount of time on that.
I understand that, but when you start to relax restrictions and have 50 people in one place, 50 people could come in contact with a lot of people. So that's what I'm saying. You have to, we have to have the ability to trace all of those contacts.
Well, again, there's 500 people at Lowe's, and it hasn't happened there, so...
But people at Lowe's don't sit next to each other for an hour. They get what they need. They walk by each other. That's the, I mean, they're not coming in close contact for a long period of time.
At some point, these businesses have to get back open.
I agree, and I want them to get, I want to make myself perfectly clear. I want everybody to get back to what, normal life. That's what I want. I think we all want that. But we want to do it in a responsible, safe way.
I'll just say this, nothing's going to change in a week. This is time for us to make our recommendations and start moving forward. Nothing's going to change in a week. Mr. Chairman, we've talked to this...
Nothing's going to change in a week. You can't say that.
Okay. I think we've talked about this enough. I think it's time for us to vote.
Clarify your statement, nothing's going to change in a week.
I don't think we're going to see, our numbers are not going to drastically change in a week. We've done this now for 35 days here in Sedgwick County.
Okay.
And our numbers have actually gotten, they got worse, then they got better, and they're going down. As Adrian said, when you subtract out the clusters, which there's a few of, our numbers are actually quite down. And so we've talked this enough, in my opinion, it's time for us to vote.
So the motion is to recommend to the governor and the health official, Dr. Minz, to lift or to not renew, lift the stay-at-home order on Monday?
To not extend the stay-at-home order.
Not extend the stay-at-home order. And work collaboratively with Dr. Minz on whatever personal, you're using words I don't even know the definition of.
Whatever person limit policy we want to have for Sedgwick County, we would work with.
Personal limit policy, meaning the mass gathering numbers.
Other words, again, I don't think we ought to have arbitrary 10, but get my drift. If we're going to have some type of, we're going to speak to that. We're going to speak to it as a Board of Health, and we ought to collaborate with Dr. Minz on that.
And so if the governor comes out with something and says we can be more restrictive, then we could recommend that if we agree, but if she, but we can't say, if she says you can't be less restrictive, then we'd have a, then it'd be a mute issue.
Part of my motion was that...
Then we'll have to sue her.
Part of my motion was that the state would allow the county to...
I'm serious.
Others have tried that.
Hey, the federal court, she got it shut down.
Part of my recommendation is that the state of Kansas would allow the county commission and as a Board of Health to collaborate with Dr. Minz to make local policy rather than have another statewide order. Okay?
Okay. Any other comments? Madam Clerk, call and roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
No.
Chairman Meister?
Aye. Madam Clerk, can we take a recess for five minutes, and then we'll be back at 11:15? Thank you.
Jim Allen Cox.
Jim Allen Cox.
The audit review will be done by Whit O'Brien, and Lindsay can add to this if there's any questions. There are, they will provide real-time consulting on eligibility as needed. They will, reports will be sent periodically to them for review, and they will give us quarterly and real-time updates as we manage our way through this. So they will, they will provide the auditing oversight of the entire process. We still have a county expenditures process, and I'll have a slide at the end which will kind of clean this up, which has a, and go all the way to county expenditures, Lindsay. The financial assistance team.
Oh, you don't want the purchasing approval process?
Well, I'll come back and talk about that. Let's go to the next slide. So the CARES Act Fund Management Process has a financial assistance team, which I talked about last week, which is our internal staff, Lindsay and Brent, Hope Hernandez, Mandy Estes, Lynn Newby, Jessica Osmar, Kevin Stamper, and Fessinger. This group continues to do what they do today, which is look at every expenditure that the county is progressing with as we move through this virus process. And we will still run through a purchase approval process on county acquisitions in relation to CARES grant through Joe Thomas and our purchasing group. So you have all the county system continuing to work on county-related acquisitions through this grant. And so then, to summarize, let me just show the spreadsheet, maybe it'll clear it up a little bit on how this is going to work. So at the top, we have the money today in an account. And one of two things is going to happen at that point where there's some county expenditures, and we're already, we've expended over 1.2 million to date on COVID response, which we think will be eligible for this money. Any county-related acquisition will go to that county financial assistance team on the left for review and approval, like we would normally do. Requests that come from outside of Sedgwick County government will also be coming in, we assume from municipalities and perhaps townships and other government agencies within Sedgwick County. Those will be processed in. All of that goes to the federal stimulus review team, which is that group of seven. They will review all acquisitions and actually vote on those acquisitions. And then it comes to you, and technically, I'm thinking we'll run these review team meetings on Mondays or Tuesdays of the week, which will set it up for the Wednesday meeting, and you will come in and be made aware of all of the purchases, just like your bid board now, all of the purchases that have been looked at, reviewed, and the vote total of what the federal stimulus review team comes up with. So that's how the process will work. We'll do it every week. We'll make it part of the agenda. And then remembering that Whit O'Brien is behind the scenes on this, watching everything, we'll be in constant contact with them, auditing and managing as we move forward. Now, Lindsay, did I forget anything that you want to add in there? Okay, very good. Questions, commissioners? Does this look like an acceptable process for, to you? Any changes? And if so, I would seek permission to move forward with this.
Just quick, so, thank you. It's a very solid plan. Is this something that you did similar back in six, seven, eight years ago when you had money? Or where'd you get this structure at?
Well, the financial assistance team that, for that internal money is very similar to what was done back then. The outside group, it wasn't really applicable then because we didn't have money where we were getting it and passing it along to folks. So that has kind of been a brainstorm among the financial assistance team members about how we can make that work the best.
And I recall you were in communication with Johnson County too, so, okay, all right, thank you. Any questions so far?
So requests for how to spend this through the, through the community level. Do we funnel them to you? How does that?
So that's a great question. Based on the fact that you all are giving us, if you give us the approval today, we'll come back to you in a week or two with some written guidelines about how we want to do that. I think we'll leave a lot of that up to Brent as the chair as to how he wants to manage that. We may come to Tom and ask for some temporary position support to help us do some of that work and make sure it's coordinated, at least knowing that this is going to go through the end of the year. And right now, our folks are just slammed with work. So I don't know the answer to that question yet, but we would like to come back to you with some more crystallized procedures, once we have your okay to do this.
Just a question. The cities in Sedgwick County, if they have a request, I understand that they probably will send that request to the state of Kansas, and they have a lump of, lump of money as well to distribute. I expect they'll probably send it to the state and the county at the same time. How are we going to coordinate, if you will, who's going to respond to that request? If the state might do that or might not do that, how do we manage that?
So that's a really good question, too. We know the state did receive about 1.03 billion from the same pot of funding. I don't know that we've heard their process yet. We're cooperating with Johnson County to see how they wind up doing that. I think once the state says whether it will reimburse, we will know better. They may very well say, if your county received dollars, we're not going to reimburse you. I think that's probably the direction we'll hear. We also know that there's federal legislation circling out there that could potentially give funding directly to those cities with less than 500,000, give them their own pots of money. So I think as we move through this, knowing that it'll be a week or two before we have a process, hopefully we'll get some better answers to that question and give clear direction to the cities. Also, if they're making the request through FEMA, they have the opportunity to do that for PPE themselves, directly to FEMA. They need to understand very clearly that if they then seek funding from us or the state, that's a big problem because it looks like they're trying to double dip. So I think there's going to be some regulation and some policy and procedure that we'll put out that will answer that question, but I don't have the answer for you today.
Okay, and then a final question. You, you mentioned the word reimbursement. Is this something that the governing bodies have to expend the money on the front end and then ask for reimbursement? In every, in every case, for our, for our own dollars? Probably not for Sedgwick County dollars?
Right. Well, actually, even for Sedgwick County dollars. So right now, we're, and we'll get to that kind of later in the presentation when we shift to the PowerPoint I'll give you. But we, we, as far as we know right now, the law says reimbursement only. And so we would expect them to make that expense, so we have a receipt, and then we would give them the funds back for that. So that is how I understand the law to work today. We may get additional guidance.
So any city that would, that would ask for something from Sedgwick County, that would be the process?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so if it's okay with Tom, I will switch over to the next presentation. Or do you have any follow-up comments you would make on this part?
Let's go ahead and do yours, and then we'll, we'll have to bring it back to probably a vote.
Sorry, I lost my mouse there for a second. Okay, so commissioners, I should have said this before, Lindsay Povisso, your CFO. This, you should have a hand out at your desk that looks like this. It's not as pretty as the last one. My apologies. It's just black and white. But we did receive some guidance last Wednesday from the Treasury.
I don't have a copy of that.
Okay, I'm so sorry. Let me, did you?
I know it looks like I have a lot of paper here, but I don't have a copy. Thank you. Appreciate that.
My apologies. Okay, so we did receive some guidance last Wednesday from Treasury on how this is to work. It's not a lot. It was four pages of guidance with a half-page of FAQs. And so we do expect that we'll probably get more, and as that happens, we'll come and let you know. We are only focused today on the coronavirus relief funds. As you can see on this slide, they did provide a lot of venues for funding. There's direct rebate payments to taxpayers, the unemployment insurance expansion that we've all heard about, small business loans, there were some stabilization funding. They also made a number of pots of funding available to governments for, just like Tabitha talked about this morning, for elections. There's some money for that. There's medical response and PPE. There's rural transportation. There's dollars available for having to maintain and keep county jails clean, things like that. But that is a separate pot of funding. Then there's also what we'll focus on today, the coronavirus relief fund that was included in Title V. And that was that 99.6 million that Tom talked about that's already been deposited in our account. 1.25 billion minimum went to each state. Then if there were municipalities with 500,000 population or more, that money was peeled off. So about 116 million went to Johnson County, 99.6 million came to us. And so that leaves the state with 1.03 billion. So we know at a high level, there are some eligibility restrictions. Commissioner Howell, you already talked about those with terms of reimbursement. It must be necessary COVID-19-related expenses incurred between March 1st and actually December 30th. So that was some clarification that we heard about yesterday on NACO. Until now, we had thought it was December 31st. It's actually December 30th. And then those expenses cannot be included in the 2020 budget. At the end, anything we don't spend must be returned. So I think that's going to be something, just because we received 99.6 million today doesn't mean that's ours to keep. We'll have to return anything we don't spend on eligible expenses. It has been reiterated many, many times on many, many calls. I've heard now that states and local governments may sub-allocate those funds. There's no requirement that that occur, and so I think that's going to be part of the discussion, too, that we hear at the state level, depending on what they perceive their own needs to be. And the Act defines what a local government is, and I think it's really important as we move through this discussion. We know that this funding was intended for local governments, and so here's what they tell us that is. It's a city and a township. Those are the ones that jump out at me. So we have a lot of those across the county. Every single government has been required to provide that family-first emergency paid sick leave for two weeks and the 10 weeks of paid expanded family medical leave. Those will be reimbursable expenses. So it is possible that we could see some requests from literally every, every entity that we've got if the commission opens that door. And it has also been reiterated that any dollars we receive, if we sub-allocate those, we are still responsible. The county will be the one, when the inspector general comes through for the audit, which is almost certain to happen, that we will be on the hook if it is found that any of those expenses down the road are spent inappropriately. And so Tom's process that he's outlined, I think will give us some good assurance, give you some good assurance that we'll be okay with that. So the expenditures must be due to the public health emergency. And so they have some precise language that they include expenditures incurred to respond directly or second-order effects. And so we'll get into some of those details as we move through, and they must be necessary. But they have said in the guidance that that is, they're giving wide latitude to elected officials. It has to be basically in your reasonable judgment as to whether that is necessary or not. The costs not, in terms of the costs not accounted for in the most recent budget, it was reassuring to me to hear what that they said, just because your contingency funds can handle it doesn't mean that it's not reimbursable. So we have healthy contingencies here in the county. We have a AAA credit rating, a lot to be proud of, and that means we've been able to withstand this initial round. But we funded that through use of the contingencies. That won't be held against us. And then finally, as Tom said, a really important point is revenue replacement is not permissible. So the fact that Calm Care maybe hasn't been able to see as many clients, we're not getting as much sales and use tax revenue, or at least we expect we won't, that's not going, these funds won't help us with that particular issue. So within the guidance itself, they list some specific examples of what eligible expenses would be. And so I'm including these here for you all, so you can kind of see what the parameters are. I've taken just those that could apply to Sedgwick County, don't apply to school districts and such. So medical expenses of public hospitals, clinics, or similar facilities. So the drive-through clinic that's been stood up would be reimbursable. Temporary public medical facilities, so if there ever was a point where we had to stand up something temporary. Testing is eligible, emergency medical response related to COVID-19, although they don't give a tremendous amount of detail on what that actually means. And then finally, establishing and operating public telemedicine for COVID-19-related treatments. So we've certainly seen an uptick in those requested expenses from Calm Care, and so those would be reimbursable. Public health expenses, communication and enforcement of public health orders. So the flyers that were prepared, the translation that was done for those would be eligible. Acquisition and distribution of PPE for certain groups. This goes a little bit outside of local government in that it says child protection services, child welfare, child welfare officers and direct service providers. But certainly, those are within the county's wheelhouse. Disinfection of public areas and other facilities like nursing homes. Again, that's normally outside of what local government can do, but it was something that they said could be done as it relates to the public health crisis. Technical assistance to local governments. This is how we believe we'll be able to fund the Whit O'Brien contract that Tom referenced before to help us come in and audit these expenses, to make sure that we're doing things appropriately. Public safety measures undertaken due to COVID, again, not a lot of guidance on what that means. So again, that comes back to your reasonable judgment. And then if there were ever to be quarantine orders, again, knowing that this exists through December 30th, if that were to come up. Payroll expenses. So employees whose service is substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency are able to be reimbursed. And so as folks have been reassigned from their normal departments to health or emergency management for assistance, it looks like we can recoup our costs for that, even though many of those positions are included in the operating budget. In terms of compliance actions, we are able to seek reimbursement if there's food delivery to vulnerable populations. And they do have some examples on what those vulnerable populations are. And I can send you a link to that information if you want those details. Improving telework capabilities for public employees. Certainly, we know that's been an issue for us, and so we can seek reimbursement for that. Again, the sick and paid family and medical leave to public employees, maintaining county jails, and if necessary, care for homeless populations, although we know that the city of Wichita is doing a lot of that with their CDBG funds that they've also already received. Provision of economic support. I think this is one that's going to cause some maybe controversy or questions. We are able to provide administrative cost reimbursement for programs that would give grants to small businesses or local payroll support programs. However, that seems to be largely done at the state level. And so this guidance was written for states, local governments, tribal governments, everyone. And so it is the cost to administer those programs. Right now, the county isn't operating those, and so we would not anticipate seeking reimbursement for this. But certainly, the state could. So then moving to the ineligible expenses, things we know we cannot. So any, the state share of Medicaid. If we were to seek insurance coverage for any of this, which at this time we haven't contemplated, that would be excluded. Payroll costs for employees whose duties are not substantially dedicated to the public health emergency itself. Expenses that have been or will be reimbursed under any federal program. So this is where, that discussion you brought up, Commissioner Howell, about making sure people aren't trying to seek funding from multiple sources or making sure that we're not also seeking public assistance at the same time where we're planning to use CARES dollars. That's where we need to be really cautious and careful and deliberate. Finally, reimbursement to donors for donated items or services. We have heard a lot about folks donating stuff to us lately, and that is fantastic. Unfortunately, as long as it's a donation and us not just making that purchase, it's not eligible for reimbursement for the CARES Act, so that would simply be a county expense. Workforce bonuses are prohibited unless they're due to hazard pay or overtime. So we take that to mean that the hero pay or the COVID stipend that you all had authorized for two payrolls that just completed, that is reimbursable. And then if we had any severance payer legal settlements, that wouldn't be eligible. This slide just lists a few examples. Oh, yes, sir.
So the hazard pay is eligible or not eligible?
It is. It is. Workforce bonuses are ineligible other than if they're spent for hazard pay or overtime. And then it's got to be unbudgeted overtime. So we're going to have fun, I'm sure, with going through all of these details. So this slide here shows what the county has already spent money on that we believe we can seek reimbursement for, and that's actually where my next ask is going to come from. We have spent a tremendous amount of money, or at least committed a tremendous amount of money to try and get PPE, gloves, masks, testing supplies, all those things. Even though they're not trickling in, the orders are absolutely out there, and we've committed those funds for that. The drive-through, oh, sorry, Commissioner.
Yeah, so if we have, you know, some businesses out there that really don't know how, I mean, they, they, it is recommended that they use PPE for delivery of services to customers, and they don't know how to acquire this, would that be something that, that we, how are we going to get that protective equipment to, to those kinds of folks? Would that be something we are, we would talk about propping up or handling for those people who?
So outside of it being as the result of a public health order, I don't know that the county could actually make the, could actually buy those things and reimburse them. I think certainly we have experts in the field who have tried to solicit all the masks and all that stuff, and certainly we could try and make that information available about where we've been successful. I don't know, Tom, if you have anything you want to say about that?
I'll just add to that. Commissioner, we had a conversation yesterday. There's a COVID Task Force team out there that made up of business members. And there is a group within the business community that wants to take that on, acquisition of PPEs. City of Wichita is going to help with that. We'll, we'll have some part in that, but our focus is on EOC response, emergency responders, the 127 agencies. So, and I think the group understands we have our hands full, so there is a separate group that's standing that up.
Okay. So communicating that, though, could be, I mean, how do we plan to communicate that?
Yeah, and it was just yesterday, so absolutely want to make it very clear to the business community how that's going to be.
Thank you.
Okay. So, so you can see the list of examples of things that we've already spent. I will just give you a quick update on that. So we have actually spent, in terms of dollars out the door, $156,000. But I want to make sure to give you a big caveat on that. Again, I said, we, we know what we have committed to spend, and we are, within the county alone, not looking at fire district, we are at $1,027,000 in actual commitments paid out the door. We know that we still have that COVID stipend that will be paid out on this Friday's paycheck. We anticipate that being about another $180,000. Then we know we have the fire district that has already spent $63,000 to date, including the first COVID stipend, and they have an estimated another $26,000 that will go out on this paycheck for COVID stipend. So all told, we believe we have committed or actually spent just under $1.3 million, the vast majority of which is reimbursable, thanks to the fact that everyone has been following the right processes. Departments have been reaching out to the appropriate people and getting direction before they actually do things. So I cannot speak or thank them enough for cooperating with us to make sure we can get all of this covered. So that's just really since the beginning of March, since that March 1st start date. So my ask for you today, at the conclusion of this presentation, is that you allow us to start using some of that 99.6 million dollars to start reimbursing at least some of these costs, the hero pay, the PPE, the other things that have gone through the county's process and been actually approved. And so what we would ask is for budget authority in that new stimulus, well, not new, but the reactivated stimulus fund of $2 million. The anticipation would be that we would have $600,000 of that in personnel to fully pay for the COVID stipends. And also to pay for, now that we know we can reimburse for the mandatory emergency paid sick leave and expanded FML, we want to start getting those costs out of departmental budgets and grant funds especially, and move that into this fund. So we need budget authority in order to do that. The expenses are really not up to a lot of discretion based on the way that federal law was written. We want to then ask for $750,000 in, so of that $2,600,000 in personnel, $750,000 in transfer out to reimburse for those actual costs that have gone through the procurement process. Those expenses have currently occurred in the general fund and the fire district general fund. So we want to try and make those funds whole. And the reason I'm asking for that today is because that would allow us to happen in April. And so that would mitigate the impact on our financials if we're able to get that revenue in to offset actual expenses. To date, again, only actual, not anything that we plan to spend. $200,000 in contractuals to allow us to create the shopping carts for Whit O'Brien to come in and help us for the foreseeable future with those weekly reviews and onsite consulting. And then $450,000 in commodities to deal with these orders of PPE that we know are out there but haven't actually yet been acquired yet, so we haven't been invoiced for. So that is the ask. I can, I totally understand if you're not comfortable with that today. Again, it's more about trying to get those financials worked out in April, but it's not a dire situation. We just need to get it worked out within the next month or two. So with that, I would recommend you, I guess, receive and file the report and authorize that $2 million of budget authority in the stimulus fund to be used as described.
Okay, thank you, Lindsay. Pretty thorough. Is there any comments, questions?
Yes, sir.
I guess I've got a question. The previous briefing that, that the manager provided, the last slide showed that BOCC is the final authority on spending this. But what you just said is you want $2 million, and we're not the final authority. Isn't that the way I understood it?
So I, and, and Tom can correct me to, if he wants to use a different process. What we had talked about is having those external folks, the seven members, having that voting team come to the commission. I think we also would foresee using that going forward. The commission had delegated some of that emergency authority to Tom as long as he apprised you of what was happening as he was making those exceptions. And so to the extent we've already made those expenses, that's, I guess that's what I would be requesting today is, is what's already occurred. I think going forward, this process would be in place to make sure that that review happens and comes to you all for approval. But some of these expenses, the PPE and the other stuff, has, has been done, reded by the medical team and provided out on the street. So I don't know if that answers your question satisfactorily or not.
I think that's a good answer, Commissioner. Clearly, it's our intention coming forward that as new ones crop up, you would be the final approval. You guys did approve the stipend pay. I've notified you of a couple large-scale kinds of purchases we made on PPEs and those kinds of things. So you've, you've had some knowledge of those, but clearly, moving forward, we'd want everything to come through the commission. I think this initial, what we've been collecting since, you know, early April into March, is just a cleanup of allowing Lindsay to get, start making those funds whole again. I think that's the ask for today.
Thank you.
And, and if I could follow up on that, something I should also say. To the extent we don't have budget authority available in that stimulus fund for use, we do have to continue to make those expenses and use budget authority in the general fund and the fire district general fund. And that, for me, is a concern. I hate to continue to consume that budget authority, knowing that we're still only in April, and we don't know what the future holds for that contingency use. So that's part of also why we're requesting that authority.
I don't have any problem with what you've expended up to this point. I just want to make sure that we follow the process that the manager's already put together.
What, what is the total cost for Whit O'Brien?
Well, right now, the estimate they gave us back was 150,000. But that is what they say would be kind of an outside estimate for the rest of the year. And that also assumes that we will have a high-level use. We also are, are planning to use BKD, our financial auditor, help us with establishing some grant processes. And so we'd have potentially some spending that would happen as they teach us how to be the grantor because normally we're the grantee. And so they also, we're using their current contract for that. So these are, are high estimates, and it would require that we come back with some kind of competitive procurement or exception to procurement if we want to continue that for anything outside of the scope of just merely consulting us on CARES Act eligibility.
Okay, so give me the quote of what you want the motion to read.
If you would authorize establishment of $2 million of budget authority in this stimulus fund as described.
So moved.
Thank you.
And we wanted, can I amend to say you wanted to receive and file the previous reports?
Sure.
Let me help you out there, Chair. I, I think we need a couple votes. I think what the, what Commissioner Dennis just did is one. And then I would like a vote on this plan, that it's okay to move forward with that. And then I need just a little bit of cleanup, since this is the last COVID item of the day. I need a little bit of cleanup on some COVID-related stuff. So two votes and give me one more chance at the end.
So there's a motion and a second on approval for the 2 million budget item. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Commissioner Howell, did, did you want to say something before that? I'm sorry.
I just want to echo what Commissioner Dennis just said. So the other types of expenses that we might be contemplating are going to go through the, through the review team, all of them. I mean, whether it be, you know, advertising or, or salary items, they're all going to go through the review team. Okay. That's great. Thank you.
I didn't, I didn't mean to cut, I didn't know if you were, okay. Okay, so that item's done, so you want us to receive and file, a motion to receive and file the presentation?
I'd like you to approve it. I mean, if it's okay, this is how you want me to progress, then we can go to the next level of creating guidelines and rules for how to do it.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we Okay. So I'll make a motion that we approve the CARES Act proposal as submitted by the manager earlier.
Second.
So motion and second. Any other comments? Okay, being none. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
And then just real quickly, Chairman, just a couple of cleanup things on COVID before we get on to bid, to the bid items. I never did give you a final tally on furloughs. So we had 179 voluntary furloughs that ended up being approved. And then we had an additional 55 furloughs come in that were assigned by department heads. So that's our total furlough population of today, which runs through May 23. Just a heads up on that. And then a reminder that when the commission approved the COVID stipend pay for first responders, that was, when you voted, that was for two pay periods, essentially a month. That will be expiring unless the commission takes further action. Staff at this time is recommending that we let it expire with the purview that if something happens within the environment where we begin to see spikes or different kinds of migration of the infection, that we can turn that back on. And we could, we would be very ready to turn it back on. We have all of our names and everybody, all of the hard work is done on it. It would just be the commission giving us approval to do so. So we would recommend that we let it expire with the premise that we could turn it back on in the future if the commission sees it as necessary.
Okay. It was set to expire on its own, right? We don't have to have a motion to?
That's correct. If you want it to expire, no action taken.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for the updates. Thank you, Lindsey. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item D, consideration of four items.
Oh, no, just one second.
I think we need a receive and file still.
Of the last?
Everything you just said, have we done the receive and file already? I don't think we have.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Okay. I'll second. Michael. Okay. Motion and second to receive and file, Tom's last couple of items. So being no other comments, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item D, consideration of four items for procurement.
Hello, Mr. Joe. Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. We're recommending four items for your approval this morning, still this morning, yes. Item number one is hardware, network, wireless, and related services for the Division of Information and Technology. This recommendation is to utilize the Midwestern Higher Education Compact Contract, which is MHEC 1001-2015, and it's with Hewlett-Packard Enterprise. And we're going to establish contract pricing per the agreement, and that goes through June 30th of 2022. Item number two is automated extraction instrumentation for sexual assault samples, and this is for the Regional Forensic Science Center. This recommendation is to accept the quote from QIAGEN North American Holdings Incorporated, and that's in the amount of $229,497.54. Item number three is a tract excavator for Public Works Fleet Management. And this recommendation is to accept the quote from Berry Tractor and Equipment Company, and it's based on the Sourcewell Contract 032119-KOM, and that's in the amount of $481,047. And our final item is the trash collection services for various departments. And that recommendation is to accept the proposal from Waste Connections of Kansas Incorporated. And we're going to establish contract pricing for three years with two one-year options to renew. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have and recommend approval.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've just got a couple of questions about item three. Is that a sole source?
No, sir. Item three, what they did, the Sourcewell contract was sent out to 38 vendors. 15 vendors replied with proposals, and they selected nine different categories or nine different brands of tract excavators. Our Public Works Fleet Management looked at those nine categories, and the Komatsu brand that's listed best met their requirements.
So we don't get to see the other offers? That's kind of different than the way we normally, I don't understand why we don't see nine different things in here so that we can take a look at it.
We can provide you with that information of seeing the other nine proposals.
Well, the other thing is, I'm a bio-American kind of person. And Komatsu is a Japanese firm. And I guess this $12,000 or $13,000 we're paying on freight is to get that thing over from Japan or something. I don't understand. We're paying an awful lot of freight on this. I can't tell, because I haven't seen the other bids, whether or not this is a good deal or not.
Well, I think Public Works has a couple of representatives on the line, and they did some of this evaluation, Mr. Spears or Mr. Weber, I believe.
David Spears? I got you on the microphone. Yes. David Spears, Director of Public Works, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Wanted you to know that we have tried out this excavator for a few months, and it worked well for, so it's been tested. Let me explain a little bit about the crane. The crane's 41 years old, and that's why we want.
David, I don't care about the crane. David, truly, I don't care about the crane. I care about this excavator and finding out why that we're only seeing one bid on this, and it's a foreign company.
Well, Joe can explain the Sourcewell contract, and I think he tried to explain that. But if you are not comfortable and you guys want to delay this, we can sure do that.
Right now, I don't have enough information to vote on this because I don't understand the answers to the questions I've got.
A motion to approve all the items and will delay item three?
Sure. And we'll come back to you with the information on the other nine awarded contracts, sir. Provide you more information.
Fine.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Motion and second to approve all purchase items except for item number three, the tract excavator. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
You bet. Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, David, for being on the call, being available. Okay, Madam Clerk, next items, please.
Consent agenda.
Commissioner, Tom Stoles, County Manager, recommend approval of consent items E through H this morning, or this afternoon.
Okay.
Move to approve, echo through hotel.
Okay.
Second.
Commissioners, we've had consent items E through H, motion and second to approve. Any comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item.
Legislative issues.
Mr. Papoun.
Mr. Chairman, really not much to say today. I've had some contact with our county lobbyist, and he indicates that there is, I guess, some disagreement or discussion among leadership about whether or not to reconvene the legislature and take care of a few matters, or just simply let Sine Di come and the legislative session in. But right now, we still don't have any more information than we've discussed prior to that. So that's all I have.
Okay. All right. Madam Clerk, next item.
Other?
Do any of the Commissioners have anything to talk about in other? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, this morning, I got a couple of text messages that literally had me devastated, and I was crying waking up this morning that my dear friend Don Hall had died in a car crash. Don Hall's been a fixture in Wichita radio since the mid-1970s. He's been the voice of the Shockers since 1983. The most amazing thing was last year when I was talking to him, he had only missed two games. And last year, he had his knee replacement, and he lost, and he missed a game. But he was so dedicated to Wichita. Some of the things that he was involved with were the Meals on Wheels program with Senior Services, the Kansas Patriot Guard. I see a lot of people this morning talking about him like he was the voice of Wichita. He and Fluffy were dear friends to me when I worked in radio. And I think what's so hard for me personally is he's one of those friends that he showed up every day at my federal trial. And there's not many people that showed up at my federal trial that are with you on your darkest days, and Don Hall was one of those people. And it's a real loss for Wichita, particularly because all evidence shows that the individual that hit him was impaired by drugs and/or alcohol. And it's senseless, and it's really a loss for our entire community, both in the world of radio, the world of sports, the world of nonprofits. He was the biggest golf enthusiast in Wichita. He was one of the biggest Harley-Davidson enthusiasts in Wichita, and just a joy. Everybody loved him. And he and his wife, Fluffy, had stayed in Wichita to work because his mom is in her 90s, and he was an only child. And now this drunk driver took Don from Fluffy, took Don from his grandkids, and sweet mama Hall, who's in her mid-90s. And I just, I dealt with sudden loss earlier this year, and just this morning, I just, it just killed me. And our community is dimmer today because Don Hall's not going to be on the radio. And this is the first time since, I believe they said, he started back in 1976, dancing Don Hall. So over four decades. So I think as a community, we need to pray for his wife, Linda, goes by Fluffy, but pray for her and his son and grandkids and his mom and everybody, all of us that loved him. But he was just a joy to be around. I know you knew him, Mr. Chairman, and I don't know if any of the other colleagues knew him or not personally. But he was just a wonderful, common sense person that did a lot of good for our community. And I think we need to recognize him as a commission and just pray for peace for his family.
Yeah. Thank you for bringing that up. He was a good person for our community, I'll tell you that. So anyway, thanks for pointing that out. Any others have anything in the other? Okay. Executive session.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 30 minutes until 12:35 for consultation with an attorney for the county regarding matters deemed privileged in an attorney-client relationship in order to discuss potential litigation and legal advice concerning legal duties and obligations. And that the Board of County Commissioners will resume a live broadcast at 12:35.
I'll second that. Motion and second to go into executive session, which will be in this, will stay in this same room. So Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. We will recess for executive session.
We will recess for executive session.[168.69]
Five seconds. Two, go.
We have returned from executive session. No action was taken and, is it, commissioners have any other things to add? Being done, the meeting is adjourned.